Greetings, everyone. This is the meeting of the Town Council Tuesday, February 6th, 2024. And it's 6 o'clock, so we are starting. Opening ceremonies, a call to order. And roll call, please.
Councilmembers Abel.
Here.
Dennison.
Here.
Droz.
Here.
Schooler.
Here.
And Mayor Lombardo.
Here. So let's stand and let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There is no invocation this evening, so let's just get going here. We have been starting off with presentations and introductions. Let me first introduce the Chairman of the Board of County Supervisors, Dawn Rao, and she has an update for us. And we want to thank her for all the things she has done for Yucca. Tell me when you're ready for things here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's an honor to be here tonight with you and to share some of the good things that we have going at the county that impact the residents in the Morongo Basin. And tonight, I have a check to present. It's not the full amount that I was hopeful to present, but I can explain a little bit of that in a minute. So tonight, I wanted to present a check for the pickleball courts that we have coming that I was able to fund. And that is for $1.6 million. And I was at a dinner with Clint Stoker, and Clint pulled me aside, and Clint said, you know, he said pickleball serves the entire Morongo Basin, it serves all kinds of different demographics, and we have a perfect location here on the campus where I think we could do it. And so I talked to Curtis, and we decided that that really would be a great basin-wide activity for all the residents. And I remember when I was on the council and thinking, how is it fair that Yucca Valley residents foot the bill for people in the basin? And it's not necessarily, we're subsidizing everybody using our fields and our facilities. And so that was something that I thought, this is great. The county can contribute, and then everybody can use it. And so tonight, I will present you with that. But before I do that, I would also like to talk about, I have been able to fund $1 million for the rehabilitation of the senior center. When I asked Curtis, I said, what's your wish list? If you could be king for a day, what would you fix if you had $1 million? And he said, the foyer and the entryway and the bathrooms of the senior center, which cracked me up because I was just in that facility having used the bathrooms. So I think that's why he picked that. He knew that that would resonate. And the most, I guess, heartening thing that we have coming that I wish I could present to you tonight, but I can't, just because the Board of Supervisors hasn't ratified it yet, is the $5 million capital contribution that I'm able to make to the aquatics and recreation project. And as you all know, construction costs have gone up so much in this era of post-COVID. There's been an awful lot of things that have been constructed through federal funds that also caused the availability of contractors to decrease and the construction costs to rise. And so I know that your project wasn't, it didn't come back exactly the way that we all thought it would. And when Curtis and I were talking, Curtis said, we're going to have to scale it back. Nobody wanted to see that happen. And so I went back, I sharpened my pencil to see what we could come up with. And this was really where I took my time from being on the council, and I thought, you know what, rather than having to increase the cost for the aquatics program from people outside of the town of Yucca Valley, maybe the county's contribution to keep those fees the same for everyone would be to invest on the capital side. And so you all ratify, I believe, this evening, that item, and then the Board of Supervisors will ratify it at our next meeting, and then I will be able to present you that check for the $5 million going forward for the Aquatics Center.
Wow.
So there's good things coming, and I've also said that, you know, our nonprofits do an awful lot, especially here in the Morongo Basin. And I talked to my kids early on, and I said, you know, what is the role of government? What should it be? And it is to do the things that we, as my definition, to do the things that we as private citizens can't do. I cannot fight fires on my own, I cannot pave roads, and I can't do a lot of the other things that are public infrastructure that's required and is needed. But so our nonprofits, they help with our mission, and they do it in a very cost-effective way, very efficiently. And so some of the things that I've been able to fund in the basin are also like our no-kill shelter that supplements the needs that we have here in the basin. So I was able to give a rather large donation to them. And we have lots of good projects coming forward with Morongo Basin Ambulance and been able to fund them as well. So it is a blessing to be in the position to be able to serve our residents here and to keep our basin moving forward with great projects that serve all of us basin-wide. So it is my honor tonight to present you with the funding for the pickleball court for the $1.6 million.
Mayor. Get a photo with all the council out there.
And when this is all said and done, it, we're hoping to get 12 to 16 courts out of this, which as Clint and anybody that's into pickleball will tell you, that that gets you the tournament size that you need to have folks come here and to play in a tournament level, which brings all kinds of good economic benefits. So anyway, Mr. Mayor, if I can take a picture with you all.
Let the council come up and join us for a photo.
Sure.
How do we make do this? We got people on our phones. It's a big check. It's a big check. Money.
Congratulations. Absolutely.
Thank you so much. That's awesome. Thank you, Don. This is one of the 50 years.
I'm excited. So anyway, it is an honor to represent you at the county level and to take the needs of our unincorporated and incorporated residents back and to try to help you in a collaborative way. So thank you for allowing me to be here and to serve you tonight.
Some comments?
All right.
We have a few, moment for a comment or two?
I think we should. You bet.
Supervisor Rao, I just want to thank you so very much. As you know, you have a long history here in Yucca Valley, and you know our needs. But tonight's check is just an example of what you've done for many communities throughout the San Bernardino County. And I understand with your area, there are a lot of small communities that don't have the pocketbooks, and they have citizens that might not have the financial means for private facilities to go and use and enjoy. And the residents out here in the desert, these small communities that you represent, really appreciate you helping us bring forth the facilities that we need and desire. And also, it's so nice to see the partnership continue with the County of San Bernardino. We've had a lot of successful partnerships with the animal shelter, with our county library. Of course, we enjoy county fire being here, our brothers and sisters serving us right here in the Morongo Basin. So instead of building separate facilities all over, you know, outside or whatever, to join them in one area, such as the pool, such as the pickleball courts, where people from Morongo to Landers to, you know, 29 Palms and so forth can come and enjoy those facilities equally. So thank you for partnering with us, and it really does magnify what we can do and what you can do for the residents of San Bernardino County. So thank you again.
Indeed, thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead.
I'd like to say thank you, Supervisor Rao. And you got your start in Yucca Valley, and you kind of assisted me with my first election here. You supported me anyway, and that was wonderful. But I'm really proud of you, how much you've stepped up for the whole county, not just Yucca Valley. Like, you helped everybody in the whole county. I see you everywhere, I see you doing a lot of stuff, and it's a more-than-full-time job, for sure. You're doing so much, and it's pretty incredible. And of course, Clint Stoker, I know he's the pickleball guy. Of course, he would be saying that to you, but I think it is needed, I agree with him. So that's an incredible amount of money for something we really need that will serve not just Yucca Valley, but the community around us, and the senior center, and of course, the Aquatics Center when that's approved. It's like, I just can't believe how much you do for Yucca Valley and the whole entire surrounding, the whole county. It's like, it's really incredible. I'm really impressed every time I hear you on the radio or see an article about you. So thank you for all you're doing. I really appreciate it.
Supervisor Rao, thank you very much for your contribution to our community and the Morongo Basin, as you said. These are facilities that you and your kids discussed at one time, what is the role of government? And you're absolutely right, there are things that we individually cannot accomplish. And I think that's the best way to see it, because when you talk to kids like that, what is it that they start to want? A lot of folks don't see the value of having an aquatic center or seeing a pickleball court. Maybe that's not their time of life, but you're also bringing in our seniors, and I love that, you know, recognizing that all the way across the spectrum, it's important, and it was something that will add value and the quality of life to our residents throughout the entire Morongo Basin, and especially us. I think it's just a wonderful opportunity for collaboration. I really like your networking with the other communities within the entire county, and also with the town manager and the staff and the council also. Those are the relationships that kind of bring these items forward and the opportunity to make a difference. And I can't thank you enough. It's a beautiful projects. I was going to say project, but yeah, multifaceted. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Supervisor Rao, thank you. You make us proud. We can go back, all of us can, excuse me, remember when we felt kind of neglected out here in the desert, in the Morongo Basin, by the county for a lot of years. And since you've been supervisor, you and your staff, your team have been everywhere and helping and very involved in our communities. And so we thank you for that, and thank you for this contribution.
Indeed. We want to thank you very much, Supervisor Rao, for all that you have done. It's just, it's so heartwarming to see your interactions with the county and with our town. You've just always been there to listen and to come up with ideas and solutions to our problems. We appreciate that kind of attitude, and you're doing a heck of a job. Look forward to your reelection. Let's see, we're going to move on to our, oh, first off, is there anybody in the public that wants to comment on Supervisor Rao's presentation? No? We will now hear from Assistant Chief of the Fire Protection District, Scott Tuttle, and he has a little update for us, too.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wow, how do I follow that? Unfortunately, I don't have a big check to present to you, so.
Yeah, we're still waiting for that fire station, though. You can do that anytime.
So am I, trust me. And the Aquatics Center, too. I'm really looking forward to the Aquatics Center.
Yeah.
So tonight, well, like you said, my name is Scott Tuttle, Interim Deputy Chief Operations for San Bernardino County Fire District. Tonight, we're going to talk about FP5, what it is and what the impact the fire district is. So the reason we're discussing this tonight is to get some education out about proposed measure W. So proposed measure W is on the ballot, the March 5th ballot, and it's really given voters an opportunity to repeal or retain FP5. And we're going to go into what FP5 is and how much it contributes to the fire district. The measure is going to ask voters if they want to repeal FP5. So yes, repeals it, and no, keeps it in place. So FP5 is an annual fire parcel tax. It was originally voted on by the residents of Hellendale, or Silver Lake is also known as, back in 2008. Around 2016, we had four cities join the county fire district, San Bernardino City, Upland, 29 Palms, and Needles. They joined the fire district for various reasons, but most of them needed a funding mechanism. They couldn't afford their fire department anymore. So when they joined the fire district, they also annexed into FP5. And so that's how they were able to continue services in those cities. In 2018, the parcel tax, FP5, was expanded across the entire fire district. So everywhere that county fire provides service was assessed the FP5 parcel tax. It currently accounts for about 19% of our annual operating budget, or about $47 million. Interesting, out here in the Morongo Basin, from Yucca Valley to the Colorado River and from the national park boundary out to I-40, that's the service zone. We generate about $10 million in property tax that goes to the fire district, and another $10 million in FP5. So a loss of FP5 here in this service zone would mean a loss of 50% of our revenue. Another thing about FP5, I want to be sure and talk about, is that it pays directly for firefighters. The firefighters that are here, they respond to all the calls here in Yucca Valley on a daily basis between the two fire stations and the four stations here in the Morongo Basin. FP5 goes directly to fire emergency operations. You may know, people that have done building or own businesses, that they have to get permits through the fire district, for building permits, remodeling, business permits, various permits. When you pay those permit fees, that pays that division of county fire. So FP5 doesn't pay for those inspectors or the plans checkers, your fees pay for those. Similarly, the ambulance here in Yucca Valley that we provide, the ambulance billing that we charge for that ambulance transport pays for that service. So FP5 is just for the firefighters on the fire engines doing that direct emergency So a little stats, some stats about Yucca Valley. Last year, we ran 7,842 calls within the town limits. Of those, Medic Engine 41, which is the paramedic fire engine that's at the fire station across the highway here, ran 3,072. So the rest of the balance of that number is either calls that the ambulance took by themselves, or a second call and another fire engine from like Mesa or Joshua Tree had to come in and provide that service. Which is another key thing I want to talk about is regionalized fire protection services. So we operate on a regionalized service delivery model. So all of our fire engines and fire stations help each other out. So no one community, even if you're down in the city, no one fire station can handle every emergency that comes to it. So all of our resources work together to provide that service. Similarly, if we had a big incident here and our fire engines were tied up for a long time, we bring other fire engines from other parts of the county fire district. Bring them from the high-desert area, Asperia, the Sarn Valley area. We've, we can bring them from San Bernardino Valley. Wherever we need to bring fire engines, we can have them here at a moment's notice. So what is FP5? How does it impact the town? So the revenue here, generated here in this service zone, has to be spent here. So money generated in Yucca Valley can't be spent in Asperia, can't be spent in Arrowhead. Likewise, the money generated in those communities can't be spent here in Yucca Valley. We have one fire station here in the town proper, Station 41 across the highway. And then we also consider Station 42 on the Mesa, the second Yucca Valley fire station. Even though it's outside the town boundary, it does serve that portion of the town that's on the Mesa. And then it also obviously services the rest of Mesa, Landers, and Johnson Valley. It has a fire engine with three people on it. At least one of them is always a paramedic. Sometimes, like I think today, all three of them are paramedics. Then also at the station, we have two ambulances that provide ambulance transportation, and they also have paramedics on them. So FP5 supports that staffing, that, those three people on that fire engine, it supports that paramedic service on the fire engine. It also provides, I talked about it, provides direct fire and emergency response capability. Our hand crews, our wildland program is another example of that. So when we get a brush fire, vegetation fire, we can bring our hand crews out here, and they can start doing that mop-up work, cutting line around the fire, finishing off the fire, gets our paramedic fire engines back in their fire station, ready to respond to calls here in the town quicker. Then also FP5 pays for fleet upgrades and replacement, station maintenance, and improvements. There is currently no replacement revenue available. A few years ago, the fire district was tasked with finding an alternate revenue source, and they were unable to find one that worked. Fire stations are significantly funded by FP5, so basically, if we lost FP5, we would have a reduction in staffing, we could close fire stations, that would increase response times. And any time you reduce service or increase response times, there's a chance your insurance premiums could go up. Lastly, if FP5 stays, if it's retained, then we'll maintain the current funding level that we have and maintain our current staffing and resources. So that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment? Please state your name and city of residence, and let us hear from you.
My name is Mark Chapel, and I'm a resident here at Yucca Valley, over here on Elk, Elk Trail. Thank you very much for that presentation. That's why I came tonight, I wanted to know what this was about, and you made it clear. I very much appreciate it. I did have, I did a little bit of brief research in the mailer that is sent to everybody, and there was some arguments in there about the retirement plans. How much of this goes to, how much of this goes to retirement plans?
So I don't have an exact number off the top of my head, but you'd be surprised how low the, our retirement portion of our total budget is. So obviously, personnel costs are a large portion of our budget, like any business or corporation or organization, but the retirement contribution is not the largest part of that, that portion of the budget.
How could I obtain that information?
Our budget is public records, so you can find it online.
Okay, great. Thank you.
One other question I had, it just occurred to me this evening. Roughly, I understand this is a parcel tax, I assume this is a uniform tax across every parcel in the county. What is that annual assessment per parcel?
Sorry if I'm out of order here, I don't know if this is really the forum for public debate or back-and-forth questioning, but try to answer the gentleman's questions. Currently, it's 172 and some change. I don't have the exact number on me, but.
Thank you so very much. That's all the questions I had, and I do appreciate your time.
Thank you. Important information. Please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Savitt. This has been quite a controversial issue in our local community. We love our firefighters, thank you for your service, but there's been a lot of concerns on how this was handled originally. I remember when I first got the envelope, we had to put our addresses on the back of the envelope, and if we didn't do that, our vote wouldn't be counted. And there was, if I read it here, it says here that originally it was supposed to be only for one area, Hellendale, and it was expanded without our approval. So I just remember there's all kinds of controversy, it got put through anyway, and a lot of people in our area are wondering, what, where did that money go? Did we get new fire stations? Because there's people complaining, they don't have enough fire service, we start go out towards Landers or Wonder Valley. So we're really leery as a community, a good portion of the, has nothing to do with the firefighters. We just want to get clear on this. We're really leery about what happened originally, the lack of transparency. We felt it was dishonest, and we want to see it being straightforward and honest. I think most people want to support our fire department, we want to be protected, but we want to make sure the money goes to our community, that they're actually getting fire stations, or we're supporting more fire workers. So I'm hoping there's transparency with this, because I felt that that whole thing was just really awful. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do you want to respond?
So this was an awful way to bring it forward prior to my time on the Board of Supervisors. I remember sitting in the adjacent room here, listening to the fire chief at that time, talk about how it was going to be a protest vote. And regardless of whether you wanted to fund the fire service or not, I think most everyone objected to the protest vote nature of it. And this is a special district, it is not a department of the county, so they cannot go out and they cannot tax themselves like it would normally be done. So a special district, much like we did with High Desert Water District, has to be done through a protest vote. So the argument came in, do you really think that we're going to print off the piece of paper, find our own stamp, our own envelope, figure out our own assessor parcel number, stick it on, and have any remote chance of it not passing? And so that was the unsavory aspect of it. I agreed that it was not done in what I thought was a fair manner, but I didn't understand the nature of special districts at that time. And so the argument has been to bring this forward, to have it be a vote of the people, which we have done before and we're doing again. And so hopefully, people will decide whether they want to tax themselves and to have this level of service remain or not. And so the fire district has presented what will be if it passes and what will not be if it doesn't pass. So I hope that clarifies, and I know that all these folks here today will be happy to answer any additional questions on what we've received for that amount of funding through the years that we have collected that. So thank you.
Thank you for the clarifications. Please come forward. State your name.
Hi, my name's Jim Gergoli. I'm the President of the San Bernardino County Firefighters. So I'll just give you a quick history about FP5. When it was, when it originally was an overlay, it was under a protest vote, but that followed fire district law, and it was successful when it went through. A year later, a group of people got together to put it on the ballot to get rid of it. During that time, it lost, it was, it stayed on because they lost their measure by about 12 points. That wasn't good enough for them, so a year later, they came back and tried it again. By then, there was already a suit filed against them for falsely gathering signatures the wrong way, that was just settled, I believe, the other day in court. Now we're back at it. So that, so that you have a perspective of what we're talking about. The county fire department serves 1.5 million people, 1.5 million people, and it takes 5,000 signatures that they go out and gather and to turn around and put it on a ballot. So they, 5,000 people have the ability to affect 1.5 million people and cut your firefighters. This, make sure that everybody understands, the voting no on this is you are going to cut firefighters. There's nothing else. If there's, if there's problems that you have with the transparency in the county or the problems that, hey, where did the money go, or why haven't services improved? Well, then you need to take that up with the, with the chief and/or the county fire district. Last thing, I started in this fire department here in Yucca Valley 30 years ago, 30 years ago. 30 years ago, we had six people. You're going to miraculously guess how many we have today. We have six. Six. We had four downtown and two up in the Mesa. Today, we have three downtown and three in the Mesa. There has been no improvement here to Yucca, and there needs to be improvement to Yucca. And there needs to be concern about the growing, how much Yucca has grown, and how little the fire protection services have grown. I started in this fire station over here, which probably should have been condemned 20 years ago, and I heard you say something about it, Mayor. We still haven't moved forward to try to get that replaced, let alone the one on the Mesa. So there's things that still need to be done here, and I can assure you, I express my concerns to the county every day, and you could ask Supervisor Rao about that. But I will tell you, this, make no bones about it, this is about affecting firefighters. We should be all supporting a no on W, and then get this thing secured so we can, so we can serve these communities that we need to. And don't let 5,000 signatures decide who's going to protect you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? I'll let you have one more shot at it. Go ahead. I like to get information.
Thank you so very much. I really wasn't even going to come up here until this gentleman, I'm sorry, what was your name again, sir?
Jim Gergoli.
Mr. Gergoli, I'm so glad you're here, because you can answer the question that I had earlier from the chief. What is your retirement income?
Well, I'm not retired. Okay. So I work full-time still, so I don't have a retirement income right now. Okay. But our portion that we pay, I pay a large portion out of my check for my own retirement, and the county pays a portion of my retirement.
Do you have a projected number of what your retirement income will be? Maybe that is kind of speculative.
Yeah, I don't think we really need to get into that.
Okay, we won't get into that. It's, it's not important, thank you.
Thank you. We got to move on, but, quick.
Just my concern, I mean, I, I really want to support the fire department. You guys agree. My son's a firefighter, but I just got concerned as well, you know, with the parcel amount, you know, the $170 per parcel, some people were complaining that they bought land up here years ago and they can't afford that, is there any way we can help them out that way, especially if they're seniors? That's my question, thank you.
Okay, we don't have a response at that, and I don't think, we're going to move on. Yeah?
Yes, sir, we have someone online, Margaret would like to speak. Margaret, I will ask you to unmute, you will have three minutes to speak, you may speak now.
Hello, I would just like to comment on this, that losing fire protection can also greatly increase homeowners' policy rates. It's become very difficult to get insurance in the Morongo Basin on our homes, and prices have gone up considerably, and I fear that if a, if this is repealed, that it may be simply impossible except through Fair Plan, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for all your comments, and we're going to move on with...
Mayor, I have a couple of comments, questions?
Sure.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for presenting tonight, appreciate all the firefighters being here as well, as the union representatives, and again, I had a real quick question for Deputy Chief, on the zone collected, the monies collected by zone, can you explain that again one more time? Because I think that's a very important factor.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. So the fire district covering the whole county is divided up into four service zones. The valley service zone, which is basically the San Bernardino Valley, the mountain service zone is the mountaintop, the north desert service zone is the Hesperia, all the way to the state line in Baker, and then the south desert zone is where we are now. So the Morongo Basin is within the south desert service zone. So all funds generated here, property tax, FP5, everything, that's the revenue that we collect here in this zone has to stay here in this zone.
I think that's a really important point, that I didn't really realize, that, you know, the monies collected has to stay within this zone, which is the Morongo Basin and areas surrounding us, so the money's not just evaporating going off to some other portion of the county that we don't benefit from. Again, like we talked about earlier, a lot of what we do here in the Morongo Basin is really unified, I mean, Yucca Valley has a city, 29 has a city, but we do service a lot of the same citizens. People come and go and enjoy our facilities, just like they do in 29 Palm, so the one lady had brought up a couple of points about the process, which has been corrected and changed because of our county supervisors, and now it's very transparent, you know, that we've had several opportunities to vote on these measures. So again, I just wanted to clarify that, that a 19% cut in the budget would be very devastating to the outlying areas outside of Yucca Valley, and I appreciate you gave us a lot of figures about Yucca Valley, but we have to worry about our residents around us as well, those up on the Mesa, those in, in the outlying areas, because if, if W does pass, 19% cut is really going to hurt those particular areas, because they don't have the funding. Now, within the town of Yucca Valley, we do have some funding for fire services, and of course, you know, with an outdated station and those types of things, you know, we, we do need some funds, but it is really important that no on W does help protect our firefighter capabilities, the equipment, the staffing, the, the stations upgrades, things like that are very, very important, so for me personally, no on W is a really important thing, because as we talked about earlier, I can't go out and fight fires, and you, you know that if you lived in this area, and the way we've been hit with fires up in Pioneer Town and outlying areas, it, it brings a lot of resources right here to help protect our citizens, and I can't think of anything more important than protecting our citizens with strong fire and with strong police force. So, again, I think it's really important that you really do look into it, I thank you, Jim, for clarifying a lot of the things about how important it is, and how about 1.5 million people are served with the county fire department. So, again, thank you for being here tonight and presenting everything so clearly to us.
Yeah, and as Supervisor Ralph stated, we'll be here in the back, we'll stay through the meeting, there'll be at least a few of us here to answer anybody's questions if anybody has any more questions.
Great, we appreciate that. Anybody else wants to speak?
I just want to say that public safety has always been the number one thing, most important thing that we can provide for a community, so we have a sense of well-being as we live on with our lives. I appreciate our sheriff's relationship, our fire department, I appreciate the union leadership being here, the firefighters, and also our county supervisor, so thank you for everything tonight.
And I just have to say, well, I want to ask, the FP5 tax, I believe, is what, $167 a year? So, 171, okay. You know, if you're having a heart attack, you're not going to be complaining about $171 a year, I mean, that's really important to know, and I also want to say that a lot of the questions we're asking here, anyone that's interested, if you listen to the Z1077 UpClose Show, Supervisor Ralph and Chief Muncy were on there a week ago, two weeks ago, and they answered so many questions that we're talking about. So, I think it's really important to stay informed, part of staying informed is watching for things like that, interviews on the radio, and newspaper articles, but I know if I'm having a heart attack, I'm going to want somebody there as quickly as I can, so thanks for all you do, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and that's on their, their website still, on their blog, so it is still accessible to be able to go to UpClose Show.
You can listen to it afterwards, it's, it's on there, you can download it.
Any others? It's real important to be an informed voter, so please do your own research, look into it for what works for you, it's an important item for the entire area, so it's your obligation as a citizen to check it out and vote accordingly. On for the approval of agenda.
I'll move, move the consent agenda, or excuse me, approval of the agenda, I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Mayor, I'll second.
All right, we have a...
Councilmembers Abel...
Yes.
Dennison...
Yes.
Droes...
Yes.
Schooler...
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo.
Yes. All right, can I get a motion for the consent agenda? Items three through seven? Oh, well, is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Anybody? Online? No? Counsel?
If there's no questions, Mayor, I'll move the item for consent agenda approval.
I'll second. All right.
Councilmember Abel...
Yes.
Dennison...
Yes.
Droes...
Yes.
Schooler...
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo.
Yes. Moving on to item number eight. It's a public hearing on ordinance number 311, Development Code Amendment, Section 9.63.020 and Section 9.68.020, Change of Use Requirements for Existing Structures, Conditional Use and Site Plan Review Applications. Can we hear from staff?
Good evening, Counsel. The recommendation for this item is that the town council introduces ordinance 311, amending Section 9.63.020 of the Yucca Valley Development Code related to change of use for conditional use permits, and 9.68.020 for site plan review, and that the town council finds the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15061, which states that if an activity is covered by the general rule, that SEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment, and where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment, the activity is not subject to SEQA. So a little bit of background. At the town council meeting of September 5, 2023, the council directed the planning commission for their meeting of October 10, 2023, to forward a recommendation to the council for consideration of amending sections 9.63 and 9.68 of the Yucca Valley Development Code, eliminating the requirement for construction of off-site improvements for change of use projects. At the planning commission meeting of October 10, the commission recommended that the council, on a five to zero vote, adopt language contained within the attached ordinance. So the current language is presented here, so Section D of both 9.63.020 and 9.68.020 specifies that for projects that fall within the thresholds of a site plan and design review or conditional use permit, they shall comply with the General Plan Development Code, applicable town ordinances and regulations, including but not limited to, and you have half-width street improvements, curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlights, pavement on all streets fronting the project, except as defined by the parameters of the council policies regarding street reconstruction. The proposed ordinance modifies that language that you can see in the kind of teal text down here, which is half-width street improvements, curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlights, median islands, and pavement on all streets fronting the project pursuant to the Yucca Valley General Plan circulation element, for projects that are a change in use of an existing structure, half-width street improvements are only required when total vehicle trips are estimated to increase a minimum of 200 vehicle trips per day compared to the trip generation from the prior site use. So, it's estimated that projects that do not increase daily vehicle trips by 200 trips or more would typically not result in significant traffic issues, which would normally require traffic mitigation for typical land use. The proposed Development Code Amendment specifies that for a commercial property, changes of use that do not increase traffic to 200 trips or more per day, off-site improvements are not required. It is anticipated that this change will lessen the cost for redeveloping existing commercial developments. For new developments or larger-scale changes of use, being ones that significantly increase traffic beyond those 200 trips, off-site improvements would still be required. As an example, as you recall, Nice Stream ISAs, a small-scale food establishment, was estimated to generate approximately 97 daily trips, so if hypothetically, a new business came in behind them at some point, in order for them to trigger that threshold of having to do off-site improvements, they, they would have to more than triple the daily trip count, which is a fairly significant increase, because as you could see, they only generate 97 hypothetical trips. Again, the recommendation is that the town council introduces ordinance 311, and that the town council finds that the project is exempt from SEQA, and we're happy to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Okay. So I'd like to open the public hearing and request any public comments. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to comment? Anybody online? Okay. Close the public hearing, and discussion with counsel, anybody have any questions for the staff?
I just want to say I appreciate the work staff has done, taking it out to the planning commission and bringing this back to us in a form that I, I feel is very acceptable at this time, and meets our objectives, thank you.
Very good. Anybody else?
I'll just say, I do too, I agree, and the planning commission did a good job on this, and it's nice to accommodate small businesses and make it a little easier to open a business.
Yeah. I agree, I think it's a part of the idea, what we're trying to do is foster small mom-and-pop business, and reducing the cost to get started really helps, and I appreciate the effort that the planning commission has done to make this possible, and I want to see it move forward, does anybody want to comment further?
No.
I had a quick question for you, Jared, on the, for example, the ice creams or nice creams or whatever project, is there a, a standard that you use for, let's say, the shops used before, I think there was like a tattoo shop in there before, and another couple of small little shops at one point in time, is there like a, a standard number of, of trips that you estimate for that type of an establishment?
For the prior use?
Yeah, correct.
Typically, the traffic engineer, if they think there's going to be an issue, they will factor in previous use of a project site, and so they'll net out, so to speak, those previous trips. In this case, with Nice Streams, their trip generation was so low that they just provided gross estimate, but typically, the traffic engineer provides that.
And there are standards that are produced by the Institute of Traffic Engineers, where they provide estimated traffic volumes based upon all different types of uses, so your engineers that prepare those traffic reports have standards that they do follow when they prepare those reports.
Okay, thank you, because I understood that if the change of use was over 200, then they would have to go through the, the process, if it was under, which obviously, this particular project as an example was way under, and I figured there must be some kind of a standard that we go by. I'm sure they would just love to have 97 vehicle trips to their complex every day, that would be a very successful business, but thank you so much for bringing it forward, I thank the council for supporting me in wanting to see this changed so that, as the mayor said, we can continue to encourage people to fill some of our small businesses and not have them just sitting idle and decaying, so thank you so much for your hard work, I appreciate it, and I would like to move the item unless there's any other discussion.
And I'll second.
Councilmember Abel...
Yes.
Dennison...
Yes.
Droes...
Yes.
Schooler...
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo.
Yes. All righty, on to item number nine, which is the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG prioritization hearing, and...
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, I'll be presenting the CDBG prioritization hearing. The recommendation before council is to allocate the entire final, the entire town's fiscal year 2024 through 25 CDBG allocation of $133,831 towards the senior center improvement project application, and then to direct staff to invite non-funded organizations to apply for general fund or Measure Y Fund partnership funding as consideration for the fiscal year 24-25 budget process. Just as a review, through a cooperation agreement with the San Bernardino County, the town of Yucca Valley participates with the county's HUD program to participate in the CDBG grant funding. The applications for projects open online, we publicize that via press releases and online, online social media postings to let people know for nonprofits and any other eligible businesses that they can apply. The town did receive two other project applications, there was one from the San Bernardino County Public Library Adult Literacy Program, and then one from the Friends of the Yucca Valley Library Youth Enrichment Program. Town staff did reach out to both of those applicants yesterday and let them know that Measure Y funding would be available, and that the agenda is available tonight with public hearing if they would like to make public comment. So with that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and be available for any questions, thank you.
Okay. Is there any public comment? No? Online, no? Okay, back to counsel, let's close the public hearing and discussion with the council. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate the recommendation, I think in the past, we've learned that the administration involved in the smaller grants is extremely cumbersome, and I'm glad we have the Measure Y partnership money available to back this up, but to, to allocate... But to allocate the relatively modest amount that we get through CDBG to one project is efficient, and I think this is a good recommendation. So thank you for that support.
My question is, we talked about the Measure Y funding partnerships available for other nonprofits later on in the year. Do you remember when that time of year will be?
Yes, actually, tomorrow, we will send out a press release to open up those applications for the year. We expect to present to council a recommendation for partner applications with the budget process, which would be early May.
Early May. And I just want to remind staff that we did promise these small nonprofits that we would assist them on how to fill out the paperwork so that they
Yes.
would be able to at least present their case in a very clear manner?
Yep. Finance administers the program, so we're hoping to schedule a day where we can let them know that they can come meet with us, and we'll walk them through the application process.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Zabel?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Droes?
Yes.
Schooler?
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo?
Yes. All righty, thank you. Now on to item number 10, department reports, Yucca Valley Aquatic and Recreation Center project update. And
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you tonight is just a project update on our project, Yucca Valley Aquatic and Recreation Center project. The recommendation for you tonight is the town council to receive and file the Yucca Valley Aquatic and Recreation Center project update. So just a prior history on this, on November 21, 2023, the town council rejected the sole bid for the Yucca Valley Aquatic Recreation Center project from Neff Construction, Inc., and adopted resolution number 23-36, which authorized and directed the town clerk to re-advertize and receive bids. So we just wanted to give you an idea of where we at at this point of time with this project. So it's out for bid, and right now, the bid opening day is scheduled for February 22, 2024, at 3:00 p.m. However, the closing may be extended if deemed necessary by the staff. The structural steel frame design that was approved for us to design by the council at the time is in a plan check stage right now at this point of time. Addendum number one was issued on Tuesday, January 30, 2024, updating the structural steel frame design. An additional addendum may be necessary if the structural steel frame design is returned from our plan checker with any extensive or needed corrections. A staff and consultants held a non-mandatory meeting with only two interested contractors on January 9, 2024. Subsequently, the staff and consultants have been working on a contractor outreach strategy, and I'll explain that in the next slide. February 5 was the day, which is last Monday, was the last day to receive requests for information from the contractors, but contractors have reached us to us and asked if we extend that day. So that day extended to February, Monday, February?
12.
12, 2024, at the same time. So we extended for a week, which might trigger the extension of the bid opening. We will let you, we will keep you informed in that one. So the staff and the consultants have did a very extensive outreach about the project. We prepared this outreach, one page that is, explain what the project is, explain what is the budget for it, and we have it all over, you know, we have it blasted on social media and wherever we can find a place to advertise it. And also, our consultant, which they are online right now, if there's any questions about their outreach, have reached so many contractors that is, that is right now have showed that the interest into bidding on the project. So so far, what we have is, as of today, we have five of the contractors saying that they will. That does not mean that they will, but they said that they would like to bid on this project. So this is complete our report. We will be more than happy to answer any, oh, sorry.
Couple additional comments staff would like to make this evening. Want to start out by thanking Dahl and the project manager, Safe Work CM, and HMC Architects, as well as the town staff team. Everybody has been working together in terms of marketing this project to eligible contractors so that we have a successful second bidding process. Every member of the team has really rolled up their sleeves and have been putting out a great degree of effort. It is a very, very competitive construction bidding market right now. Federal and state dollars that are available today, and that's a big number, have to be expended before the end of 2026. So we are competing against the projects within the public school system, the community college system, the university college system, cities and counties. Contractors have their choices of projects that they choose to bid on. And as normal, they look at projects that are close to home, and they look at projects that are traditional in design. A rectangular-shaped building is a lot easier to build than an indoor swimming pool and gymnasium. So we have a couple things that were, that make it a little bit more difficult for us to compete, but the team is putting out maximum effort to get our name out there, from the marketing piece that Alex showed in his presentation, to constant phone calls every week to bring in bidders. So full effort is going forward. From my perspective, in bidding projects for a number of years, if we have three or more qualified bidders on this project, I will be extremely happy. We are hoping that that list is bigger, and we're putting out that full effort. That concludes the staff's comments. We'd be happy to answer questions following public comment.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on the rebidding? No? Online? No? All right. Let's have a council discussion.
I appreciate all the outreach that's going on as far as trying to influence contractors to be part of the process and to bid on behalf of the town of Yucca Valley in our area. This is going to be a marquee project. I mean, I don't know, if I'm a contractor, a square little building for a gymnasium and a school is not too exciting, but when you can put this beautiful pool in your resume of accomplishments, I hope they get excited about bidding on it, and I appreciate it. I appreciate all the outreach. I know, Alex, your bid unveiling party was a bit of a dud last time, and I'm sure you're wanting to do everything you can to make this one much more exciting and profitable. So appreciate the efforts. I know a lot of everything is out of our control right now, as Shane was letting us know, but we look forward to very competitive bidding and working hand-in-hand with this wonderful contractor who's going to bring forth a magnificent project. So thank you for your efforts.
Okay. All right. So it's a recommendation is that the town council receive and file the report. Do we need to have a vote on that? No. Okay. So we are now moving on to item number 11. And that is the approval for funding contracts between the town and San Bernardino County. Go ahead. What are we going to hear about that?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll go ahead and give you just a brief overview of the contracts that are proposed for approval for the town and county. Supervisor Rowe did most of the presentation for me already, so I appreciate that. She touched on this contract briefly, and if she wants to drop it off in my office, that would be helpful, but it's not that easy, unfortunately. So the two contracts that she briefly mentioned earlier, that's proposed for your approval this evening, are two, both allocated to the Yucca Valley Aquatic and Recreation Center project. The first is funding passed through from the county via the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Local Relief Fund for $3.9 million. And then the other portion is a separate contract from the Board of Supervisors Discretionary Funds for $1.9 million. So again, for a total of $5 million allocated to the Yucca Valley Aquatic and Recreation Center project. Just a few details on the ARPA fund requirements within that contract is that the project should be completed by December 31, 2026. There is required quarterly and annual county and treasury reporting. Town staff will be working directly with the county to be sure we're collecting all the necessary information. Part of that information is data and demographic tracking, so we're going to be keeping track of how many people are using the pool now, how many we think will be using the pool in the future, same with the gymnasium that's proposed. So we'll be keeping an eye on that, and we will be reporting on it up to, I think, two years after the aquatic center is open. And then that also means we're going to be subject to single audit reporting, which means we'll get a second audit to make sure we're spending the federal funding appropriately. Both of these contracts would also be subject to county audit in the future, so we'll be keeping an eye, make sure we're spending it appropriately. The discretionary fund requirements are a little bit simpler, but there is a long-term portion there, which is that the town is agreeing to reduce the facility usage rate for a tenure period for all of the unincorporated area residents once the recreation center is open to the public. So that's in the contract there. The timeline for this one is also December 31, 2026. So the recommendation is rather long, so I won't read all those things to you, but it's to approve both contracts, and then to authorize the town manager to execute the contract, and the town's finance manager to execute any of the related documentation, like those reports that are going to be due. So with that, I will be available for any questions after public comment.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to comment? Now, my math is not real good, because I was, I went to the public school system way back when, but it was almost $6 million, not five, right?
The amounts you have, the amounts you have on the slide right here is correct, 3904 and 1095. So that amount is correct, and that totals $5 million.
Okay. All righty. And there was no public comment? No, no, no. Okay. Discussion here, council? No? Let's do this.
Mayor, if I may, with the presentation from Supervisor Rowe and also staff's report, I'd like to make the motion to accept the recommendation.
Second. All right.
Councilmember Zabel?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Droes?
Yes.
Schooler?
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo?
Yes. All right, we're on to item number 12, the public art program temporary art installation at the Library Plaza. We have little samples with us here today.
I know, right? We're going to solve that mystery of what those are in just a moment. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is an exciting item. This is a recommendation from your Parks Recreation Cultural Commission for the public art program temporary art installation at the Library Plaza. And to present the staff report, I'm going to invite Recreation Supervisor Clayton Reardon.
Honorable Mayor and Council, thanks for the time. This has been a little while coming. Quick recap, we, you know, this came about to enhance the identity of the community as an artistic community in the high desert through a new public arts program. We have a couple different temporary installations slated. Man, I am way more nervous today than I normally am.
Steve Bro.
So we want to embrace our cultural responsibilities and guarantee future generations a rich artistic legacy through the acquisition or exhibition of quality works of art. The recommendation tonight is that the council approve the, sorry, that the
Recommendations of the
Okay. Oh, well, not working. That the council approve and accept the recommendation of the PRCC in selecting the submission of Gubby Beck as the art installation for the public art, temporary art installation at the Library Plaza.
Very good.
In 2022, the council voted in favor of the recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Cultural Commission. Okay, thank you. Better. All right. Approving the 2022 public art policy and pilot programs, as well as allocating the funds for these programs. So this is the inaugural program from the temporary art installation component of the new temporary, the new public art program, and it is aimed at embedding art in the community, as well as providing local artists an opportunity to showcase their art in high-traffic areas. In particular, this is actually like, this is going to be the southwest corner of 62 and Joshua Lane or 247 on the other side. This is one of the highest-traffic intersections in Yucca Valley, and this was our first choice for someplace to install a, an artwork from one of our local artists. The timeline has been, we put out the call for artists on October 5, and we closed about a month later. November 8, the PRCC selected Gubby Beck's submission, and we started a 30-day public comment period. The PRCC reviewed those public comments and then again recommended the submission for your approval. This is Gubby Beck with one of her pieces on the right. It's similar to what she's proposed for the library site, although the library, this is about a seven-foot-tall piece, and the pods in the proposed piece are, each one of the pods is bigger, as you can see in front of you, and it's going to be about eight feet tall. So on the left, that really showcases not just the bent rod stock, but also how light plays with the artwork and casts shadows, which was one of the main components discussed by the PRCC during the selection process. This is Gubby with a few different pieces of work in her mask, in her shop, welding some of the other artwork that she's made. The pods in front of you are bigger than most of the other things that she's previously made. And then the, let me flip over, the Yucca Valley Branch Library artwork incorporates a variety of geometric shapes, appearing to take on different forms, changing as the artwork is viewed in a variety of perspectives. Another feature of this project is, will be the shadows cast by the installation throughout the days and seasons. Infinite connection, this submitted artwork will be raw metal left to rust as it is exposed to elements further evolving throughout its life cycle, symbolizing the connection of the world and bringing people together. I'd like to invite Gubby up to talk a little bit about the artwork, introduce herself. So I'm going to turn over, turn the mic over to Gubby for a moment.
Hi, everyone. I'm Gubby Beck. I'm a Yucca Valley sculptor. I'm a welder, and I weld large-scale installations to home decor and miniatures. What you see in front of you are pods, or what I call pods, or diamond shapes. I weld and I hand-bend everything without any heat, so the curves that you see are literally elbow grease and leverage. This will be one of my larger installations. I have done some in New York as well. I'm originally from upstate New York, where I got my Bachelor of Fine Arts. And I'm a, I've been here for seven years now. I'm also a small business owner with my fiance. We have an old-town storefront of our gallery and studio space, where you can find my sculptures and his paintings.
Very good.
Any questions?
We'll open it up for questions.
Okay. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gubby. So during the submission process, we required artists to submit some previous works, as well as samples or some sort of rendering or explanation for the proposed piece. In front of you, you have the pods. Each one of those represents a piece of the final, so there, the intent is for there to be an eight-foot circle on the ground, and then it will curl up and have another eight-foot circle up above, vertical. And then there will be a smaller circle and some arms supporting it and adding some structure and rigidity to the entire piece.
Very nice.
Some of the other pieces on the left, these are a little bit hard to see, on the left, raw steel, the next one over it, rusted, and then the other two, I believe, were powder-coated white. Public comments, they were all positive, 30-day open comment period, beautiful concept, awe-inspiring, really excited, love what this piece will add to the area, a lot of really great feedback from members of the community. And then we also wanted to thank all of the artists who participated in this round of our public art program, and these are our Public Art Program, and these are some of the, these are the other three submissions from the Call for Artists. And then again, the recommendation is that the council will approve and accept the recommendation from the PRCC for the submission of Gubby Beck, Infinite Connection, as the Library Plaza installation. I'd be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Okay.
And I'd also like to invite Gubby back up, so that you can ask her any questions as well.
So, public comment?
Is there any public comment?
Online?
Oh, cool. A quiet crowd tonight. I really like how the shapes play with the movement of the sun as well. I think that's gonna be a big benefit here, because we have so many sunny days. And is the art piece tall enough and visually significant enough to be seen by the traffic moving on the highways?
Yes, it'll be eight-foot tall by eight-foot wide, all around. So the sculpture that you saw in the images that were white, that was around seven foot, so that was only, you know, I'm, I'm five foot, so yeah, it'll definitely be seen from the, from the street, yeah. And the shadows are one of my favorite parts of the.
And the shadows will be displayed on that concrete circular area, which is the pad, that's where it's going to be set. And how do you anchor it to the ground, that, so that we don't have to worry about it blowing away in our winds?
Oh, yeah, no, actually, I usually wind-test my sculptures, so I'm kind of used to, you know, with our wind out here.
Okay.
But it will be anchored on, to the base. All those pods have two touching pieces of steel, and quite a few of them will be anchored to what's already in the base.
Will there be flexibility to the sculptures at origin?
Yeah, I'm gonna try and make minimal. I'm gonna have extra armature made out of those pods as well, so it's not an eyesore of extra support, but I'm gonna make sure it's as stable as possible.
All right, very good. I'm excited. Any other comments?
Yeah, thank you for being here. Looks like it's gonna be fun. My question is, how soon are we gonna see it? And how long are we gonna have it?
We're hoping for the end of February, the last week in February. I've already started, to be honest. Yeah, I've got the base already welded together, so the next two, two circles, and then the support beams for it.
Okay, and then I assume it's going to be there until the Christmas tree goes back up?
Yes, exactly.
All right, through this year, okay, well, thank you.
Gubby, thank you for submitting the award-winning project. I'm sure you're very excited. I know our PRC, I was on that committee for a number of years, and we had talked about public art and how important it is, and finally seeing this come to, to be able, to a reality is, is exciting. In your work as a sculpture, is this your first public art sculpture for a municipality?
In upstate New York, I had a sculpture that was in downtown Plattsburgh, and then I also have it in a sculpture park now in upstate in Plattsburgh, but so for California, yes.
Okay, wonderful, well, thank you so much. And how did you hear about the program and what was your motivation for submitting your art?
I saw a post online about it, and when I submitted, I was just really excited and hoping that it's, I already started when I submitted, I started just bending pods, because this was a sculpture I've wanted to make. And then I spoke to other sculpture artists, and they were like, oh, wait, I didn't even see it. So hopefully this encourages other local artists to submit for the next and upcoming installations.
Yes, but you get the first, the first one, that's quite exciting.
Very exciting, yeah.
Do we have any plans on lighting? As you said, it's very creative in its design, night lighting that would help show off the sculpture?
We, we spoke with Public Works today about that, so there's not currently any, we don't have any installations over there to provide lighting, but there is electricity on-site, and we've also, staff has been in touch with other cities that do these kinds of projects, and, and how we could provide light in, so.
Okay.
It's definitely in the scope of what, what we're looking at.
Right, and we have to be real careful, because we're next to a very major intersection, we don't want any lights interfering with traffic and safety and so forth. It will be a, it will, will it be painted black, or will it remain rust?
It'll be, yeah, it'll be left to rust.
So it'll, it'll gain patina as the elements get to it?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Which is one of my favorites, yeah.
Yes, well, fantastic. Well, thank you so very much, and congratulations again, I'm really excited to see this happening, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, I just had one comment, if I can. Thank, thank you, Gubby, for your presentation and the creativity. I think it's a beautiful piece of art that will leave interpretation available to many people that look at it, and what it, what it is or could be, or in their own thoughts. So I really like it, and I like the shadowing part of it, too. My only concern was, some of them that I looked at, as you had done in the white powder coating and the other textures that were on the metal, that's like, that, that piece of concrete there is pristine, and so as it rains and it rusts, it'll, it'll stain it. And so how will that work with the contrast that you look at from the sun, because that's really gonna be the biggest part, is just the exact contrast and that shadow movement?
We've actually worked with Alex's department, so we're going to use a penetrating sealant to seal the concrete, so that we should be able to clean off any staining as it occurs, so it, the, the concrete itself won't stain, there will be a nice solid layer that's absorbed into the concrete, and then that, yeah, that, that shouldn't be an issue long-term.
So it'll keep that great contrast, it'll probably, because the concrete's very white, bright, and the shadows will be, obviously, shadows. So that's neat, and I, of all the other submissions, that one really is very inspiring, so thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
And for even starting before you knew what was gonna happen, so that's confidence.
Yeah. I was like, I'm making it anyway, yeah.
Yeah, beautiful, appreciate it.
Gubby, while we have you here, can you tell us where your shop is located now? Where you sell out of?
Oh, yes, it's in old-town Yucca Valley. We're called Open Vault Studios, and it's partially a gallery, partially a studio. I don't do my welding there, I do that at home in my backyard, but that's where we do our painting and digital work, and we meet with clients as well, and do art shows.
Okay, and you have a social media outreach and page, followers and all that, so they'll, they'll all hear about this installation, too.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah. We're right in between the Dance Studio, Starstruck Dance Studio, and Artifacts.
Wonderful.
It's right on the strip.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
We're excited for you. All right, back to, do we approve this? Let's see. Yeah, we want to accept it. Approve and accept the recommendation.
Mayor, with that for item number 12, I'll make the recommendation to approve and accept the Public Art Program for the temporary installation.
I will second that.
Very good.
Councilmembers Abel.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Droz.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo.
Yes. All right, on to item number 13, the Spring/Summer 2024 Community Service Planned Programs.
Yes, Mayor and Council.
Hear about it, Sue.
So this is another recommendation from your Parks Recreation and Cultural Commission to approve the Spring/Summer 2024 Programs and Events organized and conducted by the Community Services Department. As you know, the Town Council regularly receives this recommendation from the PRCC regarding the planned programs prior to the publication of seasonal activity guides, so we're getting ready to produce our next six-month guide that will be distributed to the public in mid-March, and the programs will run starting April through September. This evening, we have the programming staff of the High Desert Nature Museum and the Recreation Division to review the programs with you. The department supervisors are here to present those highlights, and to kick us off, I'd like to introduce your museum supervisor, Celeste Hildebrand. Welcome, Celeste.
Good evening. So I have another presentation for you. It does have some fun clip art, so hopefully you guys enjoy that. But I will be presenting the upcoming exhibits, special events, and programming that we hope to have at the museum for this spring and summer. I will also present some survey results. We used those results from a 2023 survey for adults and children to create these exhibits and events and programming, so we really looked at what were the results, what were participants of the survey saying, as we were creating our programming. So the programming we did was at the beginning of 2023, and we started with the types of programs or events that local residents were interested in. As you can see, the majority were either interested or very interested in our hands-on workshops. They enjoyed lectures, but hands-on workshops were by far and away the number-one activity that museum visitors wanted to see in our programming. The subjects that had, these were the top four subject matter that visitors were interested in. Actually, botany was number one, these aren't in particular order, but it went botany, zoology, geology, and then also local history and culture. So we kept that in mind as we were developing our programming times of programs and events. 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. and 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. were the top timeframes. And then on the children's survey, 100% of respondents were interested in having our discovery kits continue. So those were introduced during COVID, when the museum was shut down, and we created discovery kits so that people could come and get them and do them at home with their families. We continued it last summer, even though we did have in-person events. All of our discovery kits sold out very quickly, so that was something that we decided we wanted to also continue this summer. So for upcoming exhibits, our spotlight on geology will continue through September. This is a spotlight where we highlight four natural geological processes that can be found either in the Marongo Basin or in Southern California within a driving, reasonable driving distance. So that will be up, and we do have programming that corresponds with that. Metamorphosis, a recycled art exhibition. This is part of our Reduce, Reuse, Recycle art exhibit that's been happening at the museum for, I believe, about 17 years. This is the second year of it in its metamorphosis edition. So community members can bring in pieces of art made out of recycled or repurposed materials, youth and adult. And then finally, our summer exhibit, which will be May through September, is called From Here to There. It looks at forces behind modes of transportation, so land, sea, and air. So some of the fun things in that exhibit are some hands-on, interactive exhibit stations, including a hovercraft chair, a canal lock system, pneumatic air tubes, pulleys, levers, really anything kids can get their hands on and move around. And it's designed to encourage participation of adults with their children as they're in the museum. Special events, so we do have special events all tied to some of our exhibits. These events are all free, and they are for community members of all ages. The first one is a new workshop, we have not done this one in the past. This is Earth Day Art Cards, so community members are invited to come down, create their own baseball-card-sized art trading cards, and then they can either take these cards home with them, or they can display them in the museum in our metamorphosis exhibit. And again, these art cards would all be made using recycled materials. The second event is one that's called the Wild West Pioneer Day Celebration. We have right now a, two exhibits, a homesteading exhibit and a mining exhibit, which we plan to increase the educational information on those before this Wild West Pioneer Day Celebration, so it's done in conjunction with that. But this day would highlight some traditional homesteading arts, such as fiber processing, candle dipping, butter turning, doll making, all kinds of activities for both youth and adults. And then finally, our big June event, it's From Here to There Family Fun Day, so just like our previous family fun days, it really highlights the summer exhibit for kids. It's gonna have crafts, food, all kinds of hands-on activities, as well as, of course, an introduction to our summer exhibit. For summer programming, I am happy to announce that we will be doubling our summer camps that we had last year. We did a two-week summer camp last year, so it sold out very quickly, so we are gonna have two, two-week sessions. The first one is focusing on science and it's actually forces, which goes along with our summer exhibit, and then we will be adding a two-week science camp on, it's called Canvas of Curiosity. So that one combines art and nature, and it utilizes the museum's collections in the camp as the students are, participants are doing their artwork. And then finally, we will have a summer discovery kit as well, which highlights the power of the sun. All right, for adults, this first activity is actually one that I am extremely excited about, I've been wanting to do this for a while. This is a paint night in the museum. It's called Minerals, the Elements of Art, and this will be led by our education and engagement coordinator. He'll be going over the chemistry of color, and participants will be making their own watercolor paint using natural earth pigments, and then they will be creating a piece of art that is inspired by the museum's geology collection. And then finally, we will have a lecture on the geology of the Mojave Desert. So that wraps up our events and programming, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, is there anybody in the public that wishes to ask a question or comment? Nobody online? Anybody in the council? Go ahead.
Just want to say thank you for all your hard work, and you plan way ahead of time, like everybody here does, which is really incredible. But anyway, thank you for all you do, and I look forward to seeing those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Celeste.
I love your enthusiasm.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, there's no shortage of activities, and the calendar looks pretty full here, but I do like the innovative ways that all of those programs, you do something unique that will engage, I guess, young and old, but primarily the kids.
Yeah.
The discovery kit is amazing, the, the art, you know, of just kind of very interesting stuff that some people take for granted, but for kids, it's a whole new world, because it's not pre-produced.
Right.
Very nice.
Yeah, and the discovery kits, we do try to include a variety of activities to really keep them engaged with their parents at home over the summer, it can be hard sometimes, so.
Yeah, but it, but it is, gives them something to look forward to, especially some of the emerging things, like making colors or growing with the seeds that are in the kit, you know, having to take care of it. It's very cool stuff. Thank you for putting that together and keeping it.
I just want to comment that I was, wandered into the, the museum and attended one of the STEM things that they had there, and explain that program a little bit.
Sure, so that's a new one that we just did. We had one session in January, and we have a second session in February, and basically, we came up with a concept and a project for the participants to work on, and so Zach Fleming Boils, who's our education and engagement coordinator, he created a presentation for the participants where this one that you attended was actually on satellites. So he explained the function of satellites, and then the participants were actually able to build their own solar-powered satellite, which they really enjoyed. The next one is a marble ball run, and so that one explores the forces of gravity, and he's gonna do the same thing, actually have a presentation, and then the participants actually get hands-on experience putting it all together. So it incorporates a lot of, you know, following instructions, actually using tools to put that together, along with, this one's battery-operated, the last one was solar-powered, so they learned about that as well. But the, both workshops have been very popular, and so that's something that, for when we look at fall/winter next year, we hope to actually build upon that and offer more of those workshops.
I highly encourage you to expand that program. I wish everybody could see the look on the faces of the kids and the enthusiasm of the instructor. It was a great meeting of the energies there, and curious, young minds are something that really are fun to watch.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it was really a good thing to see.
Thank you.
So I highly encourage that, and we want our kids to know more about science and how they interact with the world, so I think that's great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there?
Yes, so Mayor and Council, and at this time, I'd like to invite our Recreation Supervisors up, Clayton Reardon and Yakub Kuzmerik, to talk about the recreation programs.
Honorable Mayor and Council, so I'm gonna kick this off with our special events. We've got a few coming up in the spring/summer calendar, we've got our Easter egg hunt at the end of March. This is an always-popular event. We have added another age category, just due to the demand and the popularity, popularity of this event, so we're adding a, a group for ages 10 and under. We're also revamping some of the. We're also revamping some of the, the Easter eggs that act as signage. We're having an artist hand-paint, a traditional, like, sign painter, hand-paint some of the Easter eggs. They tend to be kind of photo ops for parents and kids when they have a basket of Easter eggs next to this large, you know, painted egg. So I'm trying to beautify and revamp the program a little bit, you know, count, guess how many jelly beans are in the jar, name the bunny, and then, of course, staff will show up and participate in the program as an Easter bunny, unless any of the council would like to.
That was my job in the 80s and the 90s. I was the Easter bunny for the Kiwanis Club.
Are you offering to revamp that?
I would love to do that. It was so much fun.
We'll talk. So the Easter egg hunt's always a popular one. We get hundreds of people coming out. It's the whole thing. It's a few hours of setup that morning, and it's fast and furious, and we take up an entire field, the multipurpose field just behind this building, and all those eggs are picked up in about nine minutes. I mean.
Even less than that.
Probably, yes, almost certainly less. I mean, there, the field's completely barren by the 10-minute mark. Another one is the Health Fair. We do that in partnership with the Morongo Basin Healthcare District. This, this year, that's going to be the end of April, and our youth commission last night just voted to approve a work plan that provides a joint effort with that day. So stay tuned for some more details on that. So we're going to partner and pair a Health Fair and some other programs from the youth commission. Little bit of an odd duck, but in the next spring/summer period, we actually open our holiday craft fair registration. So I know it's only February, but heads up, it's just around the corner, and that one normally books up within the month. Summer Music Festival. Have a couple Mavericks there in their blue shirts, partying it up for the Fourth of July Celebration out at Brem. This is a huge event that's probably one of our biggest, three and a half to 5,000 people for Fourth of July, three and a half to 4,000 people for Fourth of July. A band, Fireworks, represents a large investment in staff resources, and it's very much appreciated the support that the council provides for that. That's followed up by five more concerts here at this facility. So we've got two of the six bands booked already. We've got some recommendations and selections. Recreation Coordinator Tommy Jones and I actually went to Whittier and met with over 100 different bands, and then spoke to probably three or four dozen of our colleagues from other cities across Southern California about recommendations, the good, the bad, the ugly, who's easy to work with, who has great, like, great stage presence. So we got a bunch of good leads, and we're chasing those down right now to get those contracts signed and get everything buttoned up. But my goal's by the end of the month. Youth programs. Family Fun Day, Celeste touched on that. So we partner with the museum for that event. H2O, that's our small children water play on the north lawn of, on the north side of this building. We typically have been getting increasing numbers for that, so we increased the program by three more days. I think that's about a 50, it's, we, we've done six to eight of those, and we've, we're up to eight or nine now. And then the youth commission just developed their work plan last night, and they, they've decided to offer a senior dinner and dance, a teen movie night here in the courtyard, a teen fun day that's paired with the Health Fair, and then the Grub Stakes Day Parade float. So, and then on top of that, they have a tech time for seniors at the Senior Center every other week for seven weeks, starting on the 21st of this month. And then they also wanted to collect dry goods, canned foods, non-perishables at the events where they're providing, like, that are part of their work plan, and anything where they're volunteering that's part of the department's events. So they, they intend to collect things over the course of their term and then donate those to Morongo Basin nonprofits that, that take those kinds of food items. Public art. You've just got to meet our first art installation submission, and I thank you for approving and promoting that, that installation. I'm really, really excited to finally get that out there and something at such a high visibility intersection. On the photo here is our first pop-up exhibit that was during the Film Festival, and then on the bottom, we have some examples of some other nighttime art installations. We do intend on releasing our call for artists to provide some enhancements for the Summer Music Festival. So that'll be the next call for artists. Keep an eye out for that one. And with that, I will turn it over to Kuba.
Honorable members of the town council, esteemed colleagues and valued community members, I'm thrilled to stand here before you today to showcase ongoing evolution of the town's recreation programs. These initiatives not only enrich the lives of our residents, but also foster a sense of community, health, and well-being. As we gear up for another exciting spring and summer season, I'm thrilled to share with you diverse array of offerings to cater to wide range of interest, age groups, and desire to promote fitness, skill development, and social engagement. Thank you. Benover?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Our adult softball leagues held throughout the spring and summer and fall months have provided countless hours of enjoyment for participants while fostering bonds of friendship and camaraderie. With casual co-ed leagues available on Tuesday and Thursday evenings, complete with flexible participation options, these leagues have become a cornerstone of our town's recreation offerings. The team registration fee of only $400 per team for an entire season ensures accessibility while promoting an extended period of softball enjoyment for all. Moving on to runs, our fitness runs, including the highly anticipated Grab Sticks Run and the Summer Glow Run this year, have become annual highlights for the fitness enthusiasts. Offering participants a choice of scenic routes, these events cater to varying fitness levels and preferences, fostering inclusivity and community, community engagement under vibrant summer/evening glow. Press affordably, these runs celebrate personal achievements in a supportive environment. Moreover, our High Low Class, held every Thursday evening from April to September, has emerged as a popular choice for adults seeking low-impact fitness options. Structured in four-week increments, the program provides consistency in progressive training, with participants having the options to choose between $32 package for an entire season and flexible, flexible $10 drop-in option. Last fall, we introduced the Summer Book Camp alongside the High Low Class, gather very positive feedback with over 200 visits, visits recorded over the both programs' durations. The emphasis on quality of the program and promotion strategies has contributed to a steady increase in attendance numbers, reflecting the program's popularity and effectiveness. Our, it's a, with great excitement that I want to also introduce our newest addition to our fitness program lineup, the Adult Pilates Class, running from March 18th to October 7th on Monday evenings, offers participants a holistic approach to fitness, focusing on core strength and flexibility, priced at $40 per four-week session with $12 drop-in option available. This class caters to adults of all fitness levels, providing personalized attention and guidance from experienced instructor. By incorporating exercises that enhance posture, mobility, and overall well-being, the Pilates Class promises to be a valuable addition to our fitness program, attracting individuals seeking comprehensive and rejuvenating worker, workout experience. Moving on to basketball, our co-ed youth basketball clinic, scheduled from June 24th to 27th, caters to students from grades third and eighth, 2-8, offering comprehensive basketball training delivered by our recreation staff. Priced only at $50 participants, the clinic promises to build on the excess of the last year program, attracting over 60 participants across the different age groups. With its focus on skill development and teamwork, the clinic is anticipated to drive even bigger turnout this year, reflecting increased interest from our youth basketball league that is going on right now, and many positive referrals. Pickleball. Our pickleball clinic has been instrumental in introducing beginners to the fundamental skills and techniques of the sport. Offered on multiple dates from April to July, this introductory clinic consists of four Wednesday evening classes priced at $32 per session or $10 drop-in option. The fall's session saw an impressive turnout of 38 registered participants, many of them were the first-time registrants. Moreover, the consistency, a high attendance rate totaling over 200 visits per session combine underscored the popularity and effectiveness of this program. To meet the growing demand and interest in pickleball, we are pleased to announce the expansion of continuous sessions accommodating both novice and advanced players alike. These sessions not only foster skill development, but also promote community engagement for their solidifying pickleball position as a beloved recreation activity in our town. In addition to our pickleball clinic, our pickleball ladder league offers participants an opportunity for competitive play and skill enhancement in mixed double round robin format, priced at $20 per session. The league spends over four Thursday evening classes, providing a structured and engaging format for players to showcase their abilities. Initially limited to only 16 participants due to our court availability constraints, we're excited to announce that the expansion of the league to utilize adjacent courts, we're going to tape them up, thereby allowing for increased participation and accessibility. By leveraging additional court space, we aim to create even more inclusive environments for players of all skills, levels alike. Last but not least, our pickleball offering continues to expand with the introduction of the pickleball tournaments, aimed at catering to players and interest in competitive play, held on the select Saturdays, oh, sorry, Saturdays in April, June, and September. These tournaments feature double, doubles and mixed doubles formats, providing opportunities to players to showcase their skills. Priced at $20 for pre-registration and $25 onsite registration, the tournaments foster a supportive and competitive environment, ensuring fairness and inclusivity within the round robin format. As we look into the future, it's important to note that these programs are seamlessly transferable to the new proposed aquatic and recreation center. Basketball, high-low, Pilates, and pickleball programs will find their new home in a state-of-the-art facility, ensuring its continuity and enhanced experiences for all of our community members. Additionally, the pickleball programs will eventually transition to the new proposed regional pickleball facility that we just got the funds from, for where enthusiasts can enjoy expanded amenities and opportunities to play. This strategic planning ensures that our town remains at the forefront of recreation excellence, providing accessible and enriching experiences for all. Thank you for your time. I'm sorry, I'm a little under the weather, so might be a little hard to understand. Any questions, comments? Oh, sorry. Oh, I bet.
And last part of the recreation presentation is the aquatics program. Ever, the aquatics program will return again for 2024, continues to have water aerobics, lap swim, learn to swim, which many, where many sessions sell out, and fun swim. Returning this year will be evening lap swim and some swim-in movies. Some of the new programming, we're going to be open on Saturdays this year, so we're going to have Saturday swim lessons, we're going to offer programming to people that cannot make it during the week, during the day, families at work or otherwise are unavailable. And then we all, we're also looking at adding some inflatable play structures, so often just the generic whippets. And those are, that's something that we've talked about for the new facility as well. So prices are increasing a little bit to, to stick with industry norms and offset some of our cost increases. Our Learn to Swim program will go up by, from $56 to $58, a $2 increase, while our drop-in sessions will go from four to five. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody in the public wishes to comment? Please state your name and city of residence. Is there anybody online? Wow, awful quiet tonight. Okay. Well, it's exciting to see all the offerings and hear all the activity, and this is just so wonderful to see the activity going on in town, and thank you for all the work to make it possible. It's awesome. Any comments?
Yeah, Mayor, one, one couple I have here.
And thank you to the entire staff for, for the briefing on that. My first one is the Water Play Day that you have scheduled. They used to do one over in Paradise Park to let the kids over there take advantage of some of those events. Is that something that still happens?
Um, are you talking about a water?
I thought they used to do a play day over there. I remember one time they had.
Oh, we did.
Yeah, and so, and it seemed to be kind of successful for that area for those kids that don't have transportation to get here.
True. When we did that before, we used to have a program over there at that community building. And unfortunately, the attendance wasn't very regular, and it got discontinued. But instead, what we had done was done special events there, just small-scale special events, meant for the neighborhood, meant to kind of build just a positive neighborhood environment there and to get the neighbors to just play with one another and have a good time. And we did those for a while. It was before all the park improvements, so, you know, we were doing most of it in the dirt and.
I remember.
Subsequently, we've done a lot of park improvements there, and those basketball courts are busy all the time. So the, we kind of started something that the neighborhood, once we made those improvements, is continuing to do, and they are using those facilities. We can definitely reintroduce something like that, but that was the purpose, was to bridge the after-school program that we had discontinued, and then to get those families to start maybe socializing a little bit more with each other. And once we did the, the park improvements, the park just took off and is getting used regularly, especially with the basketball courts that are there.
Yeah, I go by regularly, and I do see a lot of activity there. I see families using the walking paths. There is some grass out there now, and the park has made a big difference. But most of the folks that I see there are a little bit older in age, as opposed to the younger kids. So maybe just as a thought would be, as we have these events, to find out where people are at and if they have any interest maybe over there for that once in a while. It just seems like that's the age group that's not seen in the park unsupervised, and when you have the play days, even though parents are on the sideline, the kids are pretty much unsupervised. They're going, just having a great time. You know, they're kind of running and having fun. My other question is on, on pickleball. Kuba talked about all of that. For, for the newbies, for people that have not participated or shy of going there and all that, and they could just walk on, is there equipment that's available to people that, that could get involved and try and figure out what's going on before they go to Big Five and try and dress up like someone that they don't know who they're supposed to look like?
Most definitely. So yes, so we have plenty of paddles, plenty of balls with the great instructors, so you, you only need, it's sneakers that are appropriate for pickleball. I know there's a special type. Any regular sneaker will do, but we have paddles, we have balls, everything that you need that you can get you started.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Yeah. That sounds great. Thank you very much for your help.
We're really excited about those types of programs like pickleball, and actually, the expertise that Kuba has in personal fitness, we've really been able to get that started and, and get connected with people that weren't using our programs before. So that's really exciting to us, is we have clients now, we have customers that didn't really participate in our programs previously, and now they're taking an exercise class here, or now they're playing pickleball, or, so these are new customers for us, and we like that, and we're definitely looking forward to the new Aquatics and Recreation Center and, and building a clientele and building these programs that we can easily transplant once we open over there.
Yeah. Whole programs sound fantastic.
Yeah, and the classes are just super, they're very introductory, you know, so if you're intimidated by CrossFit Box, you don't have to worry about it, you can come here first, get something under your belt and.
It's a high-low thing?
Yeah, right. You know, you don't have to, you can have, be the gateway or the introduction to getting back into shape and getting. to getting back into shape and getting a healthy lifestyle going.
Very good. I just, anybody else want to comment? I just want to say that over the last month or so, I've been asking different people that I run into what kinds of things they would like to see in the community, what we, what would get them engaged in that sort of thing. And there's been a lot of interest in the art projects and the music that we have in our community. And so, what opportunities does the Park and Rec Commission have for seeking outside the bubble information and ideas? Do we actively encourage community members to bring us their ideas? I've been inundated with ideas for singers for the concerts and art installations and shows, and I really encourage that. I think it's awesome that we have an interest in that, and what a community filled with artists and musicians. And I have to admit to not being much of a sports person, but I'm excited to see the pickleball courts. That is a phrase that's taking over the country, I think, and rightfully so. I think people that do engage in it are really enamored by it, and it becomes a real routine, and it's a healthy routine, physical activity.
Mayor, Mayor, I might just jump in here if you don't mind, and just address the question about special event programming. If you remember back in your strategic planning efforts, you identified special events, whether they were art tours, art walks, music, music in our Old Town area, some of those events that you would like to see moving forward. So, staff has that on its work plan. At some point, we'll bring that back to you for a discussion, as well as conversation on what kind of direction the council would like to see in terms of bringing some of those forward, and whether that's coordinated through our Community Services Department or other department, we would bring that back to you as potential alternatives.
But it'll be a formal kind of request?
Yeah, I think it needs to be, because it needs to be incorporated into a work plan right now that does not exist, nor is there funding identified for those types of events, and so that will need to have some policy direction from the council.
Okay, very good. So, I look forward to that. We've got a wonderful community with a lot of engagement, so it's great opportunities to do many things if you're interested. Let's approve this then, right? It's the recommendation that the town council accept the recommendations of the Parks Recreation Cultural Commission and approve the spring-summer 2024 programs and events organized and conducted by the Community Services Department. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I will second that.
Very good.
Councilmembers Abel-
Yes.
Dennison-
Yes.
Drows-
Yes.
Schooler-
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo.
Absolutely, yes. Okay. On to item number fourteen.
My favorite.
Budget report for the six months ending in December, thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Hey, again, Mayor and Council. Always dislike following recreation, their presentations are all pretty, and then mine's just numbers, so I apologize, it's not as exciting, but it says we can afford all the pretty things for a little bit longer. All right, so the, uh, thanks. The mid-year budget review indicates projected year-end results are in line with the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four amended budget, with proposed amendments to align additional revenue and some additional expenditures. So, this is just a review and comparison of major revenue sources received through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three in comparison to budget. So, the gray bars go up, that's the amended budget for the total year, revenue year-to-date are the blue bars. You can see that most major revenue sources are received in the second half of the year, therefore, budget expectations only vary slightly, and we'll review those changes later in the slides here. Year-to-date total general fund revenues equal seven-point-six-six million dollars. This is a comparison to prior year. Most revenues have increased with the exception of community development revenues. The decreased activity for planning and building and safety permits have contributed to a forty-one percent decrease in comparison to the prior year. This trend is expected to continue through year-end. However, budget expectations are within that decrease, so we've already planned for it, it's included in this year's budget. Transient occupancy tax revenues have increased the most notably by fifty-five percent due to the higher TOT rate that was effective January first, twenty twenty-three. This is just a review of sales tax revenues for the general fund, beginning in twenty-twenty through the most recent quarter in twenty twenty-three. Sales tax revenues have increased significantly since twenty-twenty with a return to more normal growth patterns beginning in twenty twenty-three. Current economic effects such as higher prices of goods and services have had a balancing effect, so there's higher prices due to inflation, but with that, there is also reduced spending by consumers in those nondiscretionary items, so it kind of balances each other out. One exception is for business sector of dining out. Those local restaurants are still doing rather well and show growth in their sales tax. General fund expenditures year-to-date, total expenditures are just under nine-point-two million, which is a sixty-five thousand dollar decrease from prior year. This is mainly due to the timing of contract safety payments and vacant positions in the first half of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. This graph here reflects growth patterns for the each major general fund expenditure type, and then I just wanted to highlight that red line there, that's a comparison of growth trends for total revenues. So, you see as general fund expenditures have gone up, revenues have been keeping rather good pace, and you'll see here in amended fiscal year twenty twenty-four, they're growing somewhat similarly. Now, we're jumping to the proposed amendments to get us through the rest of the fiscal year. There's a detailed description of those proposed adjustments included in Exhibit A, page two-hundred-and-twenty-four of tonight's agenda. Overall, a seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar increase is proposed for revenues based on year-to-date trends and the funds that we've already received. So, you'll see we aligned property tax to the current assessment values that we received for the year. Minor increase to transient occupancy tax revenues as those funds continue to come in, we wanted to align that with what we received so far. Interest earnings have continued to be steady and increased through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. We expect those to increase up to six-hundred thousand for the year. Minor increase in community development for STVR permits, we've already received above budget for that particular line item, and then there was a few other minor adjustments in administrative funds. Expenditures proposed for adjustment for the general fund expenditures are just some minor calculation adjustments to some various payroll items. Contract safety expenditure is a proposed carryforward that we didn't have included in the earlier presentation to council this year, so we wanted to be sure that we included that for a budget amendment. Lastly, the majority of the proposed operating supplies and service increases are for utility service costs, legal services, and annual insurance costs, for a total of seven-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, still presenting a balanced budget adjustment. This is a review of the general fund reserve trends from nineteen-twenty through the current amended budget. Projected fund balance after the proposed budget adjustments is eighteen million, with an unassigned reserve fund balance proposed at sixty-three percent of budgeted expenditures. Jumping over to the town's special revenue funds, there's a few proposed amendments. One is to increase the debt service fund. This holds the debt service funding for payments, and then the funds that we have drawn down in twenty-twenty-two and yet have not spent, there's some interest earnings of up to six-hundred thousand for this year that will be applied to that fund. We allocated ninety thousand to street and loofah revenues for some commercial activity. We're also recommending to open the JAG Grant Fund, which is a new public safety grant that the town has now received through the county. We're expecting to receive ten thousand a year going forward, so we have twenty thousand for this year, and they caught us up from last year as well. We also, in one of your other council agenda items this evening, there was a gas tax fund increase for professional service expenditures for those annual street sweeping costs, and then also those ARPA County funding, that's six-point-five million because it includes the contracts tonight, the pickleball courts, and the senior center modernization project, all of those are ARPA funds, they are going to be in their own special revenue funds, so we can keep track of those expenditures separately from all of the other project costs. Just wanted to touch briefly on revenue measures Y and Z. Revenue measure Y and Z continues to provide major contributions to the town's programs and services. Measure Y is two-point-nine million in revenues this year, is budgeted for expenditures towards contract safety, infrastructure improvements, and continued quality of life programming. Measure Z has passed through one-point-three million so far to the High Desert Water District, and has still provided assessment fee reductions up to fifty percent for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So, the recommended action for council this evening is to receive and file the mid-year budget report for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and adopt the resolution amending the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four general fund and special revenue fund budgets as identified in Exhibit A and B. Be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Wow, always such informative information. Anybody in the public wish to comment? Or ask questions? No, nobody online. The numbers bore everybody, I guess. Okay, but they're good numbers for us, holy moly, that's great. Very good information, Jordan, thank you, as always, well-presented and easier to understand than it could, it could be really complicated, I'm sure, for you. But you made it very easy for us to digest it, and thank you for that. Any comments? Well, then, let's get this moving and let's get home. Let's have a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move the item forward.
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay, I like it.
Councilmembers Abel-
Yes.
Dennison-
Yes.
Drows-
Yes.
Schooler-
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo.
Yes, thank you. All right, on to item number fifteen. Annual report to the town temporary short-term vacation rental regulations. T S T V R, Chapter five-point-four of the Yucca Valley Municipal Code, Ordinance Number three-one-two.
Before we move on, I have to recuse myself from this, but I want to make sure, I would like to possibly participate. Can I sit in the audience, and if I feel the urge to participate, can I?
So, the law says, so you've got to make a decision, if you stay in the audience, then you need to make a comment. If you're not going to make a comment, then you have to leave the room. Sorry.
Okay, well, I'll stay in the audience and see, and I'll just say hi if I have to.
Mayor, I'll be recusing myself and leaving the room.
Good behavior. We'll come get you when we're done.
Mayor and Council, before Jared starts in on his presentation, your PowerPoint tonight is going to be a little bit different than maybe what you see in most of your presentations. Staff is going to outline a recommendation for amendments to the code. The first one has already been included in the draft that's before you. There are two more that are contained within the PowerPoint that have not been made to the ordinance. So, following staff presentation and public comment, when this comes back to the council, if you desire to make those changes or consider making those changes, we can pull that slide back up on the screen that has the specific language for the section number. Council can discuss those and determine if you want to add those or not, and then if there's any additional comments, we can address those after those which are included in the PowerPoint. Jared, floor is yours.
All right, good evening again. The recommendation for this item is that the town council takes public comment, discusses policy issues, and finds that the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section one-five-zero-six-one, and introduces Ordinance Number three-one-two in the ordinance of the town of Yucca Valley, sorry, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Yucca Valley, California, repealing and restating in its entirety, Chapter five-point-four-zero, temporary short-term vacation rental permit. So, the town council's request an annual review of the ordinance of the short-term vacation rental ordinance. The town's first temporary short-term vacation rental regulations were established in December of twenty seventeen. Since that time, approximately nine-hundred-and-seventy-six permits have been issued for short-term rentals. The number of current permits is approximately six-hundred-and-seventy. The current estimate is that there are one-hundred-and-twelve temporary short-term vacation rental permits to be issued before the town's adopted cap of seven-hundred-and-eighty-two is reached. Just a note is that that number changes on a daily basis as we get applicants, as permits expire, et cetera. However, the number of available permits has hovered around approximately one-hundred-and-fifteen for approximately forty-five days or so, so it's been consistent at that number for the past few months. Based on feedback and comments received, as well as internal discussion on the existing regulations, the following highlights points of discussion for potential amendments to the municipal code. A total of seventy-nine complaints were received in the year twenty twenty-three for short-term vacation rentals. As you could see, those are primarily noise complaints with sixty complaints, trash container complaints, which are usually, there's trash blowing down the street, or someone left their trash cans out for too long. Those types of complaints were nine for the calendar year. Parking complaints, people parking, over-parking on the street, things of that nature, five. And then, over-allowed occupancy complaints was another five complaints. It's possible that more complaints would occur or had did occur, but individuals didn't want to cause a disturbance with their neighbors or their neighbors' occupants, so it's possible that that number is slightly higher than reported. So, the first potential code change is to sections zero-two-zero and zero-four-zero, both of those address increasing the permit duration from two years to four years. That language is included in the draft ordinance. As the slide says, there's minimal complaints, and if you've seen on the previous slide, we don't get a ton of complaints for short-term rentals relative to how many permits have been issued, and there isn't really a identified benefit to having the shorter two-year time limit which we currently have. Some potential amendments, this is, as you see, highlighted here, bold and underlined, this is not included in the ordinance, but something to consider. If the town council chooses to include a change, the draft language for adoption would read as follows. And sorry, this is to address the temporary, the special event regulations that were previously brought forward to you that you've seen recently. So, just to clarify, in section zero-point, or point zero-six-zero, the total daytime numbers provided in the table below may only be temporarily exceeded when in conformance with the special event regulations contained in Section nine-point-three-eight of the Yucca Valley Development Code for guests of a permitted special event. Overnight numbers provided in the table may not be exceeded. So, that is basically to account for if they have a special event permit. Just understanding that those special event numbers may exceed the daytime numbers during that special event, and then at night, the numbers would reduce to what the permitted short-term rental could have at their property.
So, again, following public comment on this, if the council is interested in adding this into the code, we'll come back to this slide, we've got the specific section numbers, and the council can provide that direction. Jared?
The next one that's not included, but could be, is allowing multiple single-family dwelling units for a permit. So, if the council chooses to include this change, the language is as follows. Number of units per parcel. Multiple eligible single-family residential dwelling units may be rented under a temporary short-term rental permit. No other structures on the parcel, including, for example, pool houses, guest houses, casitas, sheds, hobby rooms, or studios, or other similar structures shall be rented in addition to the single short-term vacation rental unit. This change would not impact the total number of guests or vehicles allowed on-site under the maximums listed in the ordinance, and all structures operate under one permit. the maximums listed in the ordinance, and all structures operate under one permit." So the current regulation that is adopted allows for one single-family dwelling unit to be used as a short-term rental. This would allow a property, for example, that has a single-family dwelling unit plus accessory dwelling unit, which is also classified as a single-family residence, so potentially allowing for both of those structures to be rented under a single permit. Again, the recommendation is that the council takes public comment, discusses policy issues, and finds that the project is exempt from SEQA, and introduces Ordinance Number 312. And we can answer your questions following public comment.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this item? Okay. Citizen Droz, please come to the stand.
All right. Jeff Droz, Yucca Valley. And me and my wife are short-term vacation rental owner, owners. Our vacation rental is actually on our property. It's on the same parcel number, and it's 100 feet away from my front door. And we never rent it when we're not there. I know that's an unusual circumstance. So I was here originally because I thought the fees were a little excessive, $1,300 for two years for small time renters like us that only make about between $10,000 and $14,000 a year. And I totally agree with extending it to four years, so that's no issue. But the other thing is, we are required to have sound monitoring devices, which cost $200 to $300 each, and you have to have a monthly fee to, like a fee, like a provider to monitor it. So you can monitor, so when you're out of town, you can like look at it and see what the sound level is. And I think that's unnecessary for people that have never had a problem. We've had ours for four years. We've never had a problem. I know other people in town. I know we're not the normal, being on the same property, but a lot of people have not had problems. What were there, 60 incidents in the last year? So those 60 people should have to have sound monitoring devices. I live in an area with no cable, no Verizon, so I have to go through the satellite internet. And I'm paying $100 a month for 7.5 Mbps. And to add, you know, another thing onto my internet to monitor sound would might restrict, or I'll have to actually up, you know, up my MVPs. But anyway, I think a sound monitor should not be, should not be necessary for people that have never had a problem. And otherwise, I'm pretty happy with everything else. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else wishing to comment? Anybody online?
Yes, sir. We have three people wanting to speak. The first one will be Margaret. Margaret, you will have three minutes to speak. I have asked you to unmute.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Strachan. I'm a full-time resident of the Town of Yucca Valley. I oppose extending the duration of short-term rental permits due to the inconsistent and unclear complaint process. I have been told via email by code enforcement that I must first file a public records request for the local contact number, call the number, wait 30 minutes to see if the situation is dealt with. If not, then code compliance can be involved. This is an onerous process that could set a complainant up for retaliation and favors the short-term rental owner by discouraging complaints. It certainly won't get an issue taken care of in a timely manner, given the 10-day review period allowed for a public records request. If host compliance is contacted, full contact information must be given. Anonymity is not possible. Given that many with STR concerns may have been overwhelmed by this process or feared giving out personal contact information, it is not reasonable to use complaint numbers as a basis for extending permits. I reached out to Mr. Stokel.
Did we lose him?
Margaret, are you still online? This is the council. We've lost you.
I did that one of the town's midterm goals, act data. Town's website is available to all 24/7. Oh, I don't know what to do. I should have connection.
You're back with us again. Thank you.
We can hear you again.
I'm up full blast. I don't know if you can hear me now.
We can hear you. Uh huh.
You can? Okay. Anyway, I, he responded, I was, that what I was advised by code enforcement staff was not required procedure, and that staff will ensure that information is easily available in the future. He stated one of the town's midterm goals is to provide contact data on the town's website so that it is available to all 24/7. I support this. However, I do feel that permit should not be extended until a straightforward, consistent protocol is in place that is clearly delineated on the town website and accurate data is collected. I appreciate the opportunity to comment. Thank you. I also have a concern about this SFR and ADU, both under the single permit. I'd like to know if that would be like occupancy, like if there's three bedrooms available, the max would be eight, or if you start over for each occupancy unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else?
Yes, sir. Next, we have Janice. Janice, you will have three minutes to speak. I have asked you to unmute.
Okay, see if I can do video here. Okay. Hi, I'm Janice Paske. I live in Yucca Valley in the Boulder Ridge area. Last, I think it was July, my husband and I sent emails to all the town council members about our issues and concerns with the STVRs. So I won't go over that. What I would like to talk about is how unpleasant the complaint process is. We have one STVR in our neighborhood where there were recurring trash problems, and I finally went up on the website to log an official complaint, and I found it very user-unfriendly. And then you get to the last page, and I want you to electrically sign that you're not committing perjury. And if you want to encourage people to log issues that are happening with STVRs, you know, a page like that is not very inviting. Anyway, so I went through it. The next day, I got a call from a woman in code enforcement. One of the first things she asked me was, "Have you talked to the property manager?" And I was like, "What do you mean if I talk to the property manager? I mean, that's your job, isn't it?" And basically, the message I got was, "Well, unless you've talked to the property manager, don't bother us in the town." I couldn't believe that I was getting that kind of message. It was just appalling. Anyway, so, and she said, "Well, don't you live next, don't you have the property manager information?" I said, "No, I don't live next to that property, but I drive by that property every day when I leave the neighborhood, and the trash is blowing all over the place." So I got the property manager information from her, called that person, and that person said, "Oh, I haven't been the property manager for a whole year." So the information the town has in terms of the property managers is out of date, obviously. I finally talked to the woman who cleans the STVR and got the property, the person to contact, and that's how I finally did it. But I was just shocked that I, as an individual, was having to take on this whole responsibility of approaching the property owner or the property manager to report these problems. The town should be doing that. So the other things I would like to put out are, we have nine, 10 STVRs in our neighborhood, and last year, I learned through interacting with Curtis Yakama that three of them didn't even have permits. So I would like to see a website where you can plug in an address and find out whether that property has a valid STVR permit. And I would also like to have the property manager information posted on the website with a requirement that it be kept accurate. But yeah, I was just really appalled that the town seems to assume that we, as individual citizens, are the ones that have to be the ones standing in front and talk to the property managers and owners. And the STVR next to us, I have talked to them probably three times about, you know, excess noise or noise in the middle of the night, and the town doesn't know anything about it. And I asked the code enforcement, you know, how's, if we don't fill out this form on the website, how is the town even going to know how many complaints there are? And I was told that the STVRs are supposed to self-report in terms of how many complaints they're getting. What's to stop them from just lying about that and reducing the number of complaints they're getting? So I just find this whole process very unpleasant, and yeah, I think the process needs to be changed so that the individual citizens don't feel like they have to be on point to tackle these problems with these STVRs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any others? Go ahead, next.
We have, lastly, Karen Post. Karen, you will have three minutes to speak. And I lost Karen. There you are.
Cute. Okay, hello, hi. Can you, hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, and are you able to see me as well?
Yes, we are.
Okay, great. Hi, everybody. Thanks to council members and staff for addressing this issue that's been of a great concern to me for a long time. I can't quite understand some of the language, however. In my particular case, my property, under, you know, working in coordination with town, with the town, I renovated my property, which is three structures, and everything was brought up to code. Before I renovated it, it was not up to code. And so that is, there is a pool house, there is a yoga studio, and there's a main house. The pool house has three bedrooms. The main house has three bedrooms, three to four. So then my maximum occupancy was taken away, and I was told I can't have multiple structures. So that's why I'm very pleased that the issue's being addressed. However, the language is confusing to me for this reason. It says in B, "The number of units per parcel. Multiple eligible single-family residential dwelling units may be rented under a temporary short-term vacation rental permit." So, and then it says, "No other structures on the parcel, including pool houses, guest houses, casitas, are allowed." So I'm very, very confused about that, and I hope discussion can clear that up. My permit that was granted for all of the up-to-code space was on the permit itself. It says a single-family unit, that all three structures will be considered a single-family unit. And that's why I was granted a vacation rental for 14. Again, that was taken away. Now hopefully, I can get my maximum occupancy back. But I am confused about this language, and I, where it says it's not for a pool house or a guest house versus multiple eligible single-family residential dwelling unit. So hopefully, we can have a discussion about that. Thank you very much for all your hard work in putting this together. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there anybody else?
That is all we have, Mr. Mayor.
That's it? Anybody in the public there? Okay, so back to council.
Mayor and council, just a few comments, if we may. Question was asked in terms of broadening the ordinance to include additional residential structures on the property. If the number of guests starts all over at zero for that new structure, the answer to that is no. So regardless of the number of residential units on the property, the maximum number of bedrooms that are counted, and therefore the maximum number of guests, does not change. It stays the same. Two of the commenters were talking about the complaint process, so I just want to talk about that a little bit, because these processes were discussed and established by the town council specifically. Number one, there is no requirement for a neighbor to contact the property manager of an STVR. That requirement does not exist. That's not part of the process. What was provided with the council's original adoption of the code and exists in the code today is that that information has to be made available so that if a party starts at 1:00 in the morning, a neighbor has the ability to call the property manager and say, "Hey, cut it out." And that's why the council enacted a time period for response within the code. Does a neighbor have to do that? No, they do not. The neighbor can call the sheriff's department, 911. They can call host compliance. They can leave a message with code compliance. So they have all of those options when they want to file that complaint. It's not required that they become involved with the neighbor. It is a tool that's made available to them to try and address the problem in the shortest time period as possible. We had discussions, and the council had discussions, planning commission had discussions, because these regulations started out originally within the development code, about that process, and is that appropriate? And at that time, and as it continued forward, it was felt that that process was the best available means in the community today and at that time. So again, there's multiple ways for individuals to address it. It is not a requirement for a neighboring property owner to make contact with that individual, but that information's supposed to be available so that they can make that communication. Owners of STVRs change property management companies very, very frequently. If they make that change and they do not contact the town and we find out about it, that is an automatic $1,000 fine. So in the situations that were described this evening, when we come across that, the owner of that STVR is fined $1,000 automatically. It's not appealable. It's due and payable. There's no question about that. So staff completely agrees that owners change, as described by the public comment tonight. Information is out of date. When we come across that, they are fined. We do hope that at some point, this information is available on the town's webpage in some format so that it can be researched and looked up 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That's the desired format and structure that we want to use. Tonight is the first time I've heard the complaints about the host compliance form. We'll take a look at it and see if we think there's any changes that do need to be made to that. It is not unusual that public agencies have many, many, many forms that have similar language in terms of the authenticity of the individual and the individual filing the complaint. Final comment is, yes, the, and that was from Karen Post, "The language that has been included for your consideration this evening continues to exclude residential structures that do not have a kitchen, residential structures that are not classified as a single-family residential unit. If the council would like to include those, we can walk through some language that would be necessary for those types of structures to be included." I believe that addresses the public comments that were made this evening, and staff would be happy to answer questions following council deliberation.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, back to council. What do you want to say?
Sure, yeah, I'll go.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the four-year permit. I think it's gotten cumbersome, and given the number of complaints, I don't think what we see or what's been reported or reported to us is really any different than you would expect in a neighborhood that isn't STVRs, that normally it's a very small percentage of occupancy nights, you know, that trigger a complaint. So the four-year permit, especially in view of the increase... increased cost of renewing a permit and, and the number of, of complaints that we have, I think that's, that's probably a good, a good move on that. On the, um, the issue of the pool houses, et cetera, and we're not talking about a separate permit for any additional, like an ADU or, or a guest house or so forth. I think an ADU could be considered a guest house. This, that, that paragraph is confusing to me. Um, and, uh, pool houses are kind of all different shapes and sizes of that. But what we heard from the lady that, uh, joined us in the conversation is a three-bedroom, uh, pool house. Now that's, that's pretty big and just because it doesn't have a kitchen, I don't think, uh, I don't necessarily think that that should disqualify it from being, uh, included in a permit. If somebody gets a permit for, uh, their three-bedroom house and they have three more bedrooms that might be very, very close but not attached to that house, I, I feel like those bedrooms should be included and, and how would we enforce it if, if, uh, if, if we were out checking on that anyway? I think their bedrooms, uh, they have a permit. I'm, I'm interested in the alternative language to, to allow that to, to be included. And, and I'm not saying sheds, hobby rooms and studios are necessarily, uh, should be included. Uh, but those aren't, those don't have bedrooms, real bedrooms. So, huh, to, to me, there's a line drawn there, uh, after, after you get to, uh, casitas, you know, like, like pool houses, guest houses, casitas sound to me like they, they could easily be included in the, uh, uh, rentable, uh, space and the bedrooms that are counted. And then when you get into sheds, hobby rooms, studios, uh, that's, that's a different category as far as I'm concerned. So I'd be real interested in seeing, um, if we could get some language to, uh, to include those. One other comment that I have, I think there's only one other comment. Um, and that would, that would be on, um, on the cap that we have. We have a 10% cap and I know that's been recently upgraded to 782 permits allowed. We have 670 now. And given the impact, and I'd just like to open this up for discussion, is given the impact, uh, that STVRs had initially on the market and the availability of full-time rentals, um, and given the fact that, that we're, we're 102, 102, 112 permits shy of our cap right now, uh, that maybe we would take this opportunity to look at maybe lowering that, that from a 10% number to 9% to kind of see how that works. I think the, the surge in, uh, uh, short-term vacation rentals, uh, was, we, we went through that period where they were, they were going hot and heavy for a while, but they, they have tended to flatten out. And maybe we could ensure that we're, um, maybe making, making, uh, neigh- uh, long-term rentals more available to the community if we lower that to 9%. So I just wanted to throw that out there for discussion. So, um, for now, I mean, I might want to chime back in, but for now, that's my comments.
If, if staff may, and it may be beneficial if we walk through. Jared, can you take the PowerPoint back up to the time period, the number of years? So if we could, maybe we'll walk through this one step at a time. Is there consensus that moving from two to four years is appropriate for the permit period?
I'd say yes. I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, I think there's some positive aspects.
All right. So that will remain because staff has already included that within the code. Let's go to the next section, Jared. So the, this, um, language would tie together the special event regulations that the council has enacted and opened that door up. Uh, and those special event regulations by that code are all single-family residential units within the town. The language contained here under item B1 would allow that then to occur for short-term vacation rental units. So without this change, short-term vacation rental units would not be allowed to have special event provisions. With this change outlined at the bottom of the screen, short-term vacation rentals would be eligible for those special events. Is there a council consensus that that language should be included within the code?
So they would need an additional special event permit if they exceeded their capacity. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so they would need that. And that, does that have anything to do with the class one, class two, class three, class four special events? Or, or no?
It would not modify those anyway. It just makes short-term vacation rental units permitted eligible to participate in those activities. It makes no change to the code.
Okay, so if they got the special event permit, and how long is that special event permit good for? I think a year?
Do you recall, was, were those one-year or two-year permits? I believe it was one-year permit.
From my recall, it's one-year.
Okay, okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
And, and on, go ahead. I was just going to say on that discussion, I think to keep it in alignment with what has already been created for those limits for special events, I think that's a great starting point. And being new to the process, the one-year would probably be applicable to those permits because those, uh, expanded occupancies within those special events were trimmed off also on how many events they could have during the year. So that's another control that's in that and I think it'd be easy to manage to start and go from there.
My question would be there, um, when it's a special event in an STVR, the number of people, let's say it was 20 for a 20 people, that's only during daylight hours according to this? Or is that for the event that they have gotten a permit for that may last two days?
So the daytime, the daytime limits of the number of attendees gets shifted over to your special event regulations. And there's different numbers of individuals based upon parcel size and, and all of those factors. So daytime numbers change, nighttime caps remain the same under your short-term vacation rental regulations.
Right.
Overnight guests.
You have an event, you have 20 people. Your STVR only allows you to have eight. But the special event permit allows you to have 20 people during the daylight hours. And if your event goes till eight o'clock at night, do they have to leave at sundown or five o'clock? Or how, how does that, what's a daylight hour?
Uh, 10:00 PM.
I'm sorry?
10:00 PM.
Oh, okay. I understand now. That makes sense. I was confused by the daylight hours.
Excuse me, if I'm, if they don't exceed their, their capacity, their STVR capacity for their event, they don't need the special permit?
That's correct. That's correct.
Exactly. So if they're having a small yoga retreat and it's six people in an eight-capacity place, that's okay and they don't need a separate permit?
That's correct.
Okay. That makes better sense to me. And can, um, oh, let's, I think we're taking it a little bit at a time. So let's go with this.
So.
I, I think I'm in favor of this.
All right. So based upon, based upon that, then language B1 would be included within the ordinance. Let's go on to the next slide. So this is where, um, there's two different discussions taking place. One discussion is that it can, under your current regulations, only the single-family residential unit can be used today to count for bedrooms and therefore the number of occupants. This language would allow an accessory dwelling unit to be added into that to increase the number of bedrooms and therefore the number of guests. But again, the maximums cannot be exceeded within the code. There's then discussion about what about adding habitable structures such as a pool house that has bedrooms or a casita that has bedrooms? That requires more changes within the code and pretty significant. So we're going to scroll down a few slides. So definitions have to be modified. So section 5.40.020 eliminates the bathroom issue. Adds-in language may include residential accessory structures containing habitable space that were constructed pursuant to building codes in, in effect at that time, permitted as a detached, habitable, single-family residential unit or as a habitable residential accessory structure. So by definitions, this would allow a casita, a pool house, or other similar structure that's habitable, that was built correctly, that has bedrooms to be included within the counting of bedrooms and therefore guests that could be, maximum number of guests that could be allowed under a single short-term vacation rental permit. It also includes a change to the definition of short-term vacation rental unit that has to be expanded because we're now going beyond a single-family residential structure. We're going to other types of structures. So that language here is included and is illustrated how that definition would be changed. Let's go to the next slide, Jared. Um, the definition of temporary short-term vacation rental permit, again, is modified. This has the language of four years. Habitable residential accessory structure language is added. Again, that addresses the casitas, the pool houses, et cetera. And then under additional development standards, um, the number of units per parcel would be modified as well as the language for eligibility. So those are the, the sections that staff has identified. Um, 5.40.070, and then Jared, if you could scroll back up onto the first slide. 5.40.020 would need to be modified to add people's ability to include habitable space of their casitas or a guest house which doesn't have a kitchen or granny flat which doesn't have a kitchen or a pool house which doesn't have a kitchen. These would be the langu- this would be the language that would be necessary for those to be included.
Okay. Excuse me, the very bottom line there that says rented only once in a calendar year?
So what that is saying is you're not required to have a permit if you're only doing this once a year, once in a calendar year.
On the first item under the definition of a bedroom?
No, this is at the very bottom.
I, I saw that part. Yeah, the, the last sentence that he was discussing. Unless there was continuing discussion on that.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I guess we can move on. I was, I wasn't, I probably dovetailed too quick. I was trying to move back up to the beginning of your conversation on the bedroom definition. As in a casita or a pool house generally having restroom facilities for health and safety, is, is that strikeout indicating that it could just be a living corridor, like a barracks with no bathroom within the, that same structure?
No, that, that language is eliminating a specific reference to crossing another bedroom with a closet. So specific to that language only.
Okay, so it would include all the health and safety thing for sleeping restrooms, uh, hopefully proper fire escapes?
So any of tho- any of those things that are required by the building code would have to be included.
Then I, I would, I would like that definition there. So I see the bathrooms, toilet rooms, living, okay. Yeah, you don't need a kitchen, you know.
Do not need a kitchen. That's correct.
All right.
So as an example, if somebody had their primary single-family home and they had an accessory dwelling unit and they had a pool house, the bedrooms within all of those units could be included in the count. Still one permit.
Yes.
They're still limited to the cap
Correct.
of no, maximum number of bedrooms, maximum number of guests. They're just allowed to use all of the properly permitted structures on the site to reach that, that number.
And also in addition to some of the comments that some of our callers made, uh, that were online, uh, something like a studio would not be eligible. It wouldn't be available to put bunks in their beds, in their futons, sleeping bags. It's recommended as just a actual bedroom design, uh, for the structure.
How specific, is, is, does our language use specific wording for bedrooms? Or is it habitable space?
Uh, habitable space.
So if someone had a studio and it's habitable, so it's conditioned space and all of the other health and safety issues and it's just one large room, that would be counted as one bedroom.
Okay.
As long as it meets all of, all of the necessary.
One bedroom, meaning that that would set the occupancy?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
I think I'm in favor of that. It sounds reasonable to me. If you have a habitable space, it should be counted in the.
Okay. So based upon the council's, um, let me repeat back what staff has heard this evening. Based upon council's consensus, your action this evening would be to introduce the ordinance with the discussed changes. Those discussed changes include, as outlined, the change in the number of years for the permit, the change for meshing short-term vacation rental regulations with your special event regulations. And those code section numbers have all been outlined in the staff presentation this evening. And expanding the number and types of structures that can be included to reach those caps within the code as outlined. It was in sections 5.40.020 and 0.070. And I believe those are all of the changes that have been discussed by the council and have indicated you would like included within the code. So your recommended action would be to, um, find the project being exempt, the standard SECA language, and introduce ordinance 312 based upon the council's amendments as presented this evening.
Okay, I'll make that recommendation.
Yeah, I liked the review. That was good on the discussion. We had a couple of other things that, um, I think we talked about too. Uh, but this was outside of the conversation today, some of the comments made on, uh, from the public. So I think we can bring that up separately. Or would that be included now?
Um, I think, um, staff would probably like a little bit of time to go back and look at, um, the host compliance webpage, what that includes, make sure that our communication is clear when residents call in on the enforcement process. And then staff can return that if we feel it's necessary or if the council desires it to come back at a later date.
Well, I think I'll leave my notes. I'll discuss it with staff, uh, at our next meeting. And then we can get together and make sure that's included and considered.
I'm happy with that.
Could I get a little feedback on the, uh, reducing the cap idea from 10% to 9%?
My opinion is it's, uh, it makes very little difference if you haven't reached your cap. If we're coming close to the cap, it would be a more important difference. And I have no objection to lowering it to 9%. That just means that we're closer to expiring the number of permits, which is probably not a bad thing. But it's not going to, not going to affect the available rentals at all because we haven't reached our cap yet and so we're still.
I'm thinking if we hit another surge,
Another surge?
Then another surge in, in permit applications, then maybe it wouldn't impact, negatively impact the long-term rentals.
That's true. That's, that's, that's being forward-thinking and I like that when you look at it that way. I don't see the event that would cause a surge unless we had another epidemic kind of thing where people needed space again all of a sudden because that's what really brought us STVRs here and, and all that. We became very popular over that kind of a period of time. But, uh, I, it's proactive. I'll give you that. That might be a good thing.
Um, two pieces on that one, uh, the 10% cap currently seems to be working well going down. Um, it's, you know, the market adjustment is what's happening right now, but it could change, as you said. The other part that I'm concerned about is there are developers in the area that have either purchased property or in the middle of developing properties that, um, with the intention, from my view of it, and also talking to from my view of it, and also talking to contractors, that they're intended to be short-term vacation rentals. That would have to be considered and included in discussions on if, to reduce it to 9%. To think about that we don't impact those investments of other developers in the area because we don't know how long those developments may take. It may take, you know, eight months to a year to build these out. What if now they're excluded from participation? So some type of consideration would have to be built into that kind of proposal to ensure that those investors that came in in good faith and started these projects well within the cap limits that they thought were advertised at that time, that, that may change.
If we went from 10%, excuse me, we went from 10% to 9% at the current numbers, what would that be? A change of seven or eight?
Seventy.
So it's not a big deal and we're still 112 over, so I, I don't see it as a problem, but it kind of, the non-event.
Just an idea, I'm not married to it, but if, you know, I, like I said, just concerned about, about maybe impacting.
Let's talk about that at a future date and, and flesh it out a little bit more, maybe. Bring us back if it's important or will make a difference in available rentals in the future, that would be important to me to have.
And the council can also put that on their discussion list for your review next year.
That'd be great.
Something to monitor.
Yeah, let's give us, think about it.
I think that's the best place to put any type of adjustment to the short-term policy.
I had a question, can, are there numbers available of what fines we have levied over the last year?
That data has not been compiled into any statistical format, so no, that, that information is not available.
Okay. Have we had to revoke anybody's permits for violations of any of the codes?
No, we have not revoked any permits.
Okay. And we have fined people, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Can you get back with, to me with a number sometime in the future or are those numbers not easy to dig up?
We can distribute some information out to the council on what those levels are.
I would be curious to see how many fines of violations that actually resulted in a fine.
You, you'll see a whole array from people operating non-permitted to not following the standards to changing management and not informing the town, so there's a whole wide variety of those, but we're happy to get that information pulled together.
I'd be curious to see if it's a big thing or not. Okay, thank you. So what do we, we need to go make a motion on this then?
So again, the recommended action this evening is the town council.
Give a new direction, right?
That the town council makes your SEQA findings, so finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15061B3, which states that if an activity is covered by the general rule, that SEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment and where it can easily, where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment, the activity is not subject to SEQA, and introduces ordinance number 312 based upon the amendments identified by the town council.
Okay. So let's make that motion, that SEQA, that it's not considered part of SEQA and that the ordinance is.
So right now staff has enough information to move forward with the amendments to 312.
Absolutely.
And so at this time, we'd like to go ahead and move the item of seat, three, excuse me, ordinance number 312 forward as presented by staff.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's my motion.
I'll second. Okay.
Council members Dennison.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo.
Yes. All right. Will you get Merle, council member, Dros? Did Merle go where? Thank you, Jared.
Council, thank you for your patience, we're almost done.
Almost, we're there, we're close.
And for staff reports and comments, I'm sure that staff will refrain from any length in comments tonight.
I, I, I'm going to recuse myself right now.
Item number 16. We're going to discuss item 16, which is the council member salary ordinance amendment.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This staff report should only take about an hour and a half.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that. I was thinking it was going to be three.
The item before you is an ordinance amendment to adjust council member monthly salary according to a new state law. So the state legislature enacted and Governor Newsom signed a new state law called Senate Bill 329, and it increases the maximum amount of monthly salary that council members can receive, and it's based on the population of the city or the town. One thing to emphasize, and one thing that the legislature emphasized when they adopted this new law, is that it stated that it has not raised the base pay amounts for council members since 1984. So under this new state law and the ordinance before you this evening, each council member of the town council will receive a, a monthly salary of $950, but you won't receive it immediately. There's another section of state law that says that any change in council salary only becomes effective whenever one or more members of the council begins a new term of office. So the new salary adjustment is scheduled to become effective in January of 2025. That concludes the staff report, happy to answer any questions.
Is there any public comment? Anybody online? All right.
Mayor, I'll move the item as presented by legal council.
Dennison will second.
Council members Abel.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Dros.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Lombardo.
Yes. All right. Well, that brings us to the conclusion here. Dros? Let's go. So, future agenda items. Anybody have any future agenda items?
No, I think we got enough going right now.
Yeah, I think we got plenty going. Okay. That's, any public comments end of the night, public comments, something that is not on the printed agenda that you would like to discuss? Town council takes this time to consider your comments, but if there's nobody to comment, I'm not going to read the whole thing. Okay, anybody online? Public comments at the end of the meeting? You do have somebody.
Yes, sir, we have Janice. Janice, you will have three minutes to speak. I have asked you to unmute.
Are you there with us, Janice? I think we put you to sleep.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't able to unmute.
Oh, okay, we hear you now.
Okay. And, oops.
There you go.
Okay. Back and forth.
There you go.
Okay. I would just like to make a few comments about the contract agreement between BRTAC and the town. When we got our last tax bill, I looked at the BRTAC charge on it and it was like twice as much as it had done the previous year. I went and talked to our next-door neighbor and said, what are you getting charged for BRTAC? And he was getting charged half as much as we were for identical services. This is the second time this has happened since this whole arrangement between the town and BRTAC started. I immediately contacted BRTAC, I said, what's going on? I said, I think we've been overcharged, and they immediately agreed that that was the case. So basically, we were charged over $300 more than we should have been.
Wow.
And, and this was the middle of October, and here we are into February and we still have not received our refund. We have been going back and forth with BRTAC, you know, oh, we'll call you back, oh, check's in the mail, we'll get, well, you'll have it in two weeks, well, no, no check. It's just been one thing after another trying to get this refund. And part of the issue is that when you pay your tax bill, you have to pay the entire amount or the county penalizes you, right?
Right.
So it's not like we can withhold the amount that we were overcharged by BRTAC, we have to pay it. And then we're left wrestling with BRTAC to try and get our money back. And like I said, this has happened twice to us now, but this is absolutely the worst. Like I said, we've been dealing with this since the middle of October. So my husband actually went to town hall today and talked to Jennifer Rice, I think it is, and she said that if we don't get satisfaction within the next two weeks, which is when we were promised we would get the check, but we've heard that promise before as well, that my husband should, should contact Jennifer and she would see if she could help us out. But this has been just incredibly time-consuming. And I don't know if there are other people in the town of Yucca Valley who have had the same problem we're having, but I mean, if you can do anything so that we don't run into this situation again, we would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Wow, that has to be frustrating. Did they offer any?
Town staff is the first that I've heard of this tonight. We do have Ms. Paske's contact information, we'll take care of the issue, won't be an issue.
Okay, glad to hear that. All right. I think that's it. Town staff reports and comments, let's make it quick.
Staff, anybody over there?
Anybody happy?
Just real quick, I promise. So the town participated in the 2024 San Bernardino County Point-in-Time Count on Thursday, January 25th. I just wanted to give a shout-out to the volunteers that assisted us, including council member Dennison, so thank you very much, it's much appreciated.
Thank you, we'll have a report at a future council meeting and a couple of video clips, I think that'll be helpful along those lines. Shane?
Real briefly, Mayor and Council, as you recall, one of your recent directions to staff was to return back to the town council with a review of street vendor regulations, and that street vendor regulations would include all kinds of vendors, from food vendors to political trinket vendors, which we're going to see, as you can imagine, this year. Staff's working on that report. We're coordinating with other agencies, we're coordinating with the county, we're coordinating through the town attorney's office as street vending is becoming a significant issue for many communities and organizations in our region. One of the concerns about the food vendors that we see up and down the highway is they do not have county health department approval or county health department permits. As you all know, when, a lot of times when we go to restaurants as individuals, one of the things we're looking for is that sign in the window, what's their rating? And if someone doesn't even have a basic health department food permit for operating, that is a significant concern from our perspective. So we have county health department regulations that we're going to be looking at as well as local land use regulations, so a combination of both county and town. Council's previously established and adopted state regulations for sidewalk vending, so we have regulations that allow for street vending. We're going to be doing and incorporating into our process education and outreach with the vendors in terms of what they need to do to be permitted, to be legal, both with county standards as well as town standards. As I mentioned earlier, you're going to be seeing a lot of this activity, we would anticipate this year going into November with the national election, you're going to see political trinket sales at our standard locations, 62 and 247, 247 and Sunny Slope, and other places that pop up along the highway, we'll be working with those vendors as we do with any. We currently have regulations that allow us to work with property owners and to cite property owners when individuals are operating from their sites without permits, and we have some degree of ability of working with the vendors themselves. We're using all of those tools that are available to us and we're evaluating what new tools cities are using as they address these issues in their communities, so we're not unusual to that. So we just wanted to give the council a brief update that we address every type of vendor, from food vendors to the bonsai tree vendors that you've seen out along the highway, to the pickup truck that says used car, we buy used cars, all of those types of things are included in the town's enforcement efforts. We'll be coming back to the council in the near future with a report on all of those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane, appreciate that. Last comment I would have is, is I think you'll share town staff's appreciation and gratitude for your third district supervisor that we have. The number of projects that she's tasked staff with getting delivered seems to be growing every week, but that's okay, it's a good problem to have, and we're very, very grateful for her support, again, not only affecting the town of Yucca Valley, but all of the residents that tend to use our regional assets here in, in town for their purposes as well, so.
All right, thank you. Mayor and council member reports and comments. Anything, member Dennison?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to once again echo what Curtis had just said, thank you to Supervisor Rao and the entire board for helping us move some projects forward that are desperately needed in our community, and we're very appreciative for all of them, especially Supervisor Rao and the time that she spends in our basin. And our firefighters that came here tonight, thank you for your briefing about all the work that you're doing out there, and I appreciate also the union coming here to represent the firefighters of the community, and then to staff and everyone else and all the hard work we've been doing. Tonight was a long night, thank you.
Council member Dros?
I just want to say thank you to everyone for your hard work and Supervisor Rao, she does an incredible job, and we really appreciate the work she puts in, not just for Yucca Valley, but the whole region around here. And thank you, Chief Tuttle, for all your information, and I do encourage people to listen to that, like I said, the episode on Z1077, it's, you can download it and listen to it and they explain a lot of stuff. Last thing I'm going to mention is this Saturday at Joshua Springs is the Miss Yucca Valley Scholarship Pageant, and I will be escorting the young ladies out from, out to their microphone so they can give their speech. So if anybody wants to be there, it'll be a great place to be Saturday night at 6:00 PM at Joshua Springs, and have a good two weeks.
Council member Schooler?
I'll just echo the comments of the other council members in the interest of time, thank you.
Council member Abel?
As you know, we've been during the holiday seasons not attending our meetings and so forth, but January 22nd, we started resuming meetings again. Attended the Mojave Basin Air Quality Management District Meeting. They're beginning to do reach-outs to different cities and communities on upcoming grant opportunities. Also, they're starting a program for air quality at public schools, so they're reaching out to different schools, they'll eventually get to Morongo Basin in allowing them to, or having them put up flags on bad air quality days, so kids with asthma or, or people doing outside activities can be aware of the air quality. Also, I'm pleased to, to have been appointed to the Personnel Committee and also the Executive Committee, and I also asked the Executive Director of the Air Quality Management District to plan on coming out in the future with one of his staff members to present to the town council on the, on the role of air quality and, and what they do to educate the community on that. On Thursday, January 25th, I was able to attend the Basin Transit Meeting. Just want to let the community know that Free Ride Day is coming up on February 4th and 5th. If you've never experienced transit, give it a try, on those two days it's free, see how well it works, you can keep your car at home and, and get up and down the highway. So that'll be on February 4th and 5th. And another thing that a lot of local students don't know and parents is that there are free rides for all school kids. So starting July 23rd of last year, all the way till June 30th of this year, any student in the Morongo Basin can ride a bus for free, just present their school ID, or if they're elementary school, just tell them, the driver, what elementary school they attend and what grade, and they get a. what grade, and they get a free ride, uh, using public transit. And, um, also, I want to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Dros, for being selected as the new chair for the, uh, the Basin District, uh, Transit District. I know he'll do a fine job. Uh, uh, on the last, uh, question I had, question for our captain, um, just six days ago, uh, the City of Los Angeles approved, uh, license plate readers for the San Fernando Valley and the communities there. Uh, my question is, of course, uh, that's not allowed on Caltrans main highways, but are there any other cities in San Bernardino County that you're aware of that use license plate readers? Uh, and the, they wanted to make sure and point out the LA City Council was it's not for traffic citations and tickets, it's for, uh, law enforcement to use for crimes. Just recently, we had a hit-and-run of a person out on the road. No one stopped. Uh, license plate readers may help identify a vehicle at that time. Uh, do any other communities in San Bernardino County offer license plate readers that you know of?
Yes. Our, uh, our hang-up up here is with Caltrans because of Highway 62 and 247, really the choice locations where we would like to place those devices. So, to answer your question, yes. I was, as you know, I was previously assigned to Ucaipa, and basically, you cannot make it in or out of Ucaipa without passing a license plate reader. They have them on all the thoroughfares in and out of town, as well as several other communities that are, um, you know, contracted, um, with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. So, they are very prevalent within the county of San Bernardino, just not so much up here because of those constraints.
We know the main access points and so forth, but there's a lot more traffic going off the highway. Uh, we have a lot of Buena Vista, other roads that people bypass the highway on, uh, where we have a lot of traffic. So, I still think that might be possibly something we look into in the future is license plate readers on some of our major, uh, roadways off the highway. Um, solving a crime would definitely be, or solving something like a hit-and-run or, or armed robbery or something like that, uh, it would definitely be worth the, uh, the money and the effort. So, thank you. That's all my questions.
There's no pressure we can put on Caltrans to change that rule?
There have been discussions, and, uh, you know, we can discuss further. I can do some more research on that if you'd like.
I'd be interested in knowing more. All right. Thank you. Um, I wanna thank Don Rao for, Supervisor Don Rao, for all she's done for Yucca and the community at large. Also, I wanna thank Mayor Pro Tem Dros for taking over the responsibilities of the Miss Yucca Valley Pageant. I was gonna be unable to attend that, and that's an important event. Uh, we want to show, show support for the scholarship of our young women, and it's always a good event. I'm sad that I won't be able to make it. Um, other than that, thank you for all the efforts, everybody. It was a long meeting. Thank you for hanging in there. Thank you to our, our fire, uh, departments and, uh, a good explanation on the, uh, upcoming ballot measure. Please do your research, everyone, and make sure you vote. So, thank you, and have a good night. Our next upcoming meeting is, the regular meeting, is, uh, Yucca Valley Town Council will be held on Tuesday, February 20th, 2024, at 6:00 PM here in the Yucca Valley Community Center, Yucca Room. Good night. Thank you.